Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. If I mispronounce your name, please correct me. Thank you. Gina Argento.
Here.
Bobden Bakarowski. Lisa Vamonte. Gina Barrows. Eric Rosadis.
Here.
Iris Cabrera.
Yep.
Philip Cabinagro. Frank Carbon. Steven Chesler.
Here.
Michael Chiracella. Teresa Fianciata. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly. Giovanni D'Amato. Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Divanowski.
Yes.
Lloyd Singh.
Here.
Julia Amanda Foster. Yales Follow.
Yes.
Estelle Garcia. Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. David Heimlich.
Yes, here.
Sabrina Hill. Katie Denny Harowitz.
Here.
Sonia Iglesias. Moisha Indig. Robert Jeffrey. Ozina Kaminsky. Cory Canton.
Hey Dell, Giovanni D'Amato is here.
Giovanni D'Amato.
Gina Barrows is here.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Giovanni D'Amato, there you go, okay. Paul Kelthofborn.
I'm here.
I don't know if I said Cory Canton.
Hi.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. William Clavswell. Yo Lando.
William Clavswell here.
Okay. Yo Lando. Maria Liamza. Yolo. Trina McKeva. Adam Myers. Nancy Michelli.
Here.
Toby Moskowitz. Rabbi David Niederman. Karen Yeves. Mary Odomerick.
I'm here.
Janice Peterson. Bella Sable. Isaac Sofer. Del Teague here. William Vega. Maria Vieira. And Simon Weiser.
And do you have my name, Gina Barrows?
Let me check.
Oh, good, you hear me. I just finally got on.
Yes, I hear you.
Perfect, perfect. I was having a hard time getting on, perfect, thank you.
Well, welcome.
Also, this is Manny Morales. I'm wondering if you have any.
I don't have Manny Morales on the list here.
Okay.
Should I, is it? Joanna, should I have Manny Morales?
No, I think he's a presenter, he's not a...
Oh, okay, this is just... Yeah, okay, this is just a roll call for board members.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't know what was happening.
Seventeen present.
Right, thank you Dell. We have enough to start the public hearing. I'd like to welcome everybody back. Hopefully, everybody had a good, safe summer. And welcome back. The first item on the agenda is Williamsburg Charter High School, 188 Barrett Street.
Yes.
Is anybody going to present on that item?
Yes, can you hear me?
Vaguely.
Can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Patrick Sullivan. I'm from the law from Kramer Levin. And we're here with the applicant team to explain this application. It is a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution 7319 for the Williamsburg Charter High School. And it's to allow a new gym facility located directly next door to the school's existing building. And that's on 198... And this is between Bushwick Avenue and White Street. Now, the BSA special permit is necessary here because the site is located in an M1 zoning district where schools are not allowed as of right. But the site is, as I've said, located directly next door to the school's building. So it will not result in an increase in the school's population. It will just help the school improve its physical education curriculum. The building currently is vacant. It used to be occupied by a garage and a warehouse. So it's a great opportunity for the school to provide a much-needed facility. So here to discuss the application tonight is the school's head of school, Mr. Jahib Bashir. We also have Edward Jose from Losi Architects who will show you the building. And then finally, we have Valerie Jacobson, the school's head of operations, who will describe how the school will use the new building. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Mr. Bashir talking about the background of the school.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jahib Bashir. I'm the head of school for Williamsburg Charter School. And so, in a nutshell, our school was founded in 2004, and we currently serve about 963 students. The largest number of our students come from the East Williamsburg area, Bushwick, and East New York. But the school also serves students from throughout Brooklyn, Queens, the Bronx, and Manhattan. Our student body is approximately 40% African-American and 60% Latino. Having this additional space for our students would really mean a lot to, again, not only our students but to our community. Our sports teams will have a place to practice. We can host community, maybe middle school, basketball games, and so forth. And the biggest thing to remember is that athletics and just having this space, a place to go, is a draw for our students that could potentially encourage them to soar academically, right? So this could be the thing for that one student or many students that causes them to engage in our community in a way, again, that causes them to grow exponentially socially and academically. And so we're very excited about this opportunity. Again, it'll mean a lot for our school and for our community.
We can't hear you, Patrick. We can't hear you, Patrick.
I'm sorry. Mr. Jose is here. I believe he can share his screen and show you some of the images of the proposed gym.
Thank you, Patrick. My name is Ed Jose with Losi Architecture. If I'm allowed to share the screen, do I have sharing capability? I can show the plans? I don't seem to have the ability to share right now. Can I be given permission?
Is there anyone from the committee board who is coordinating that?
Yes, give me one second, please.
Yes, we'll allow you to share the screen in a minute.
Can everyone see the screen presentation?
Yes.
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 This is the front elevation or facade of the 188 Barrett Street, which is currently an existing unoccupied vehicular warehouse slash garage. The next slide shows the roof plan and an aerial bird's eye view of the upper right-hand corner where this larger multi-story building is the existing high school at 198 Barrett. The smaller building to its right, which is highlighted in red, is the existing vehicular warehouse. And then just below that is an exonometric drawing showing the existing warehouse building on a 50-by-100-foot-deep lot, which is about 5,000 square feet. The warehouse itself is one-story high, but it's a very high, single-story. It goes from 0 to 27 feet roughly to the top of the... To the top of the second floor, and then there is an existing second-floor office space on top of that. The next slide shows the existing front elevation, 188 Barrett. It's an architectural block construction with a large overhead metal rolling door, two egress doors flanking it, as well as some windows, high windows. The other views are the interior. You can see that it's a clear-span roof structure, open web steel joists, steel. It's slab-on-grade. And then the other view looking north that shows the view looking back towards the existing overhead steel door. So these are the existing conditions. This next slide shows the proposed plans. On the left is the proposed first-floor plan where there is a gymnasium space. Right now, we're showing a volleyball court on there. And up above it, towards the Barrett Street side, we have the entrance, the corridor, some new restroom facilities for female and male, storage and utility room, and then another egress door. Then we're also proposing a new connection to the existing school at 198 Barrett, which is hatched, shown hatched. And immediately on the other side of this wall is the existing cafeteria. So at the first-floor level, you'll be able to connect right from the cafeteria into the gymnasium proper. The next, the middle plan, is the proposed mezzanine-level plan. Because this is such a high floor-to-ceiling height, it's able to accommodate the mezzanine level, which we're proposing, an exercise room and an office. And then up above it are new stairways to get up to that. The stairway continues on up to the existing second-floor office, which we are now repurposing as classroom space. Again, existing restroom facilities to the right. And then just to the lower part of that plan, another flight of stairs with ADA platform lift that will connect to the upper level of the existing high school. The next slide shows a proposed new facade for the front at 188 Barrett. We would apply aluminum cladding directly over the existing architectural block. There's some window patterns here that will illuminate the interior of the mezzanine level and stairway. And these openings are actually working with the existing structural opening so that we don't have to make an effort to rebuild the entire facade. Over here is the proposed front new entrance with a small canopy, with some signage. Over to the left is the egress door, existing egress door. The next slide, just some images of the existing gym spaces at 198 Barrett. They're very limited. They're low-floor ceiling heights. And limited dimensions of these rooms are restricting what activities the school can actually hold in them. And then this last slide is a rendering of the proposed gymnasium space at 188 Barrett. And beyond, you can see the mezzanine level and the new windows beyond, admitting some daylight into... There's some basketball backboards, and this is a volleyball net. That I'll just sort of... I'm sharing my screen, or should I leave this up?
Why don't you leave it up in case Valerie wants to speak to it? Valerie Jacobson, if you're here, can you go ahead?
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Valerie Jacobson. I'm the head of operations at Williamsburg Charter High School. I've been in this position for 12 years. And prior to that, I was the director of finance and facilities for Bronx Charter School for Children and also one of the founding operations managers for Family Life Academy Charter School, also working on their facilities. I'm also a member or a resident of Williamsburg. I've been living here since 2009, so I'm a part of the community too. And Williamsburg Charter High School really is about serving the community and improving our programs to serve the community. So that's why when we saw that this space directly next door to our existing school building was available, we really believe that it can help us to expand our service to our students and the community by giving us that extra gym space, the gym space that we need, and also space for our extracurricular activities. So as a charter school in New York State, our students are required to have four credits of gym and one credit of health, at least, in order to graduate. We're on a trimester system. So that means for us, at any point in time, about 620 of our 963 students need to be programmed for gym at any one time. As you saw in the slides, we only have four spaces right now that we can use for our gym activities, and none of which that are actually full-scale gyms. So what we do call our gym is on the first floor, and it is about 1,000 square foot of space. It doesn't fit a volleyball court. It does not fit any sort of area for basketball practice. It accommodates about 40 students. And in addition, right next to that, the other first-floor space that we have, one of the four rooms, is the weight room, which only fits about 20 students in it at a time. The spaces on the upper floors are repurposed classrooms. So the other space, as you see here, is room 315. It's a repurposed classroom, and we use it for total body fitness, like movement activities. Students cannot actually do sport in the room. Room 401 is actually our dance studio, but we have been using it for physical education activities. So with the addition of the gym space next door, as you saw, this will be an amazing place for not only our gym classes, right? So that they can actually partake in basketball, but also we can have a full volleyball court, and we can accommodate more students in our gym classes at once so that they can meet their requirements and participate in a larger variety of sporting activities. Also, we will be able to then free up more classroom space in our existing building. So the students who now are using the dance room, room 401 for gym, we will be able to have more dance programming so students can have more freedom of choice for their electives for dance. And then same thing with room 315. That was supposed to be just a regular classroom, and that can return to being a regular classroom. We also are a member of the Charter School Athletic Association. So we have about 12 sports teams that need an area to practice. Because of our limited space, they really are using, you know, just like the fitness center, and it's very difficult for all of the teams to have a space to practice with our limited facilities. So having the space next door will allow our volleyball team to have a full-size volleyball court for practice and also for games as part of the league. And although it's not a regulation basketball court next door, we will be able to use the space for basketball practice as well. And right now, we have been having to rent space nearby for our basketball practice and games. And this will alleviate the need for the students to travel to and from the school to these other locations because they'll be able to just enter directly from the school into the gym or practice location area. So we... Thank you so much for having us here tonight. And we really look forward to improving our services to the community with this space.
Thank you, Valerie. Yeah, so that's all our presentation, but we're here. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there anyone with any questions?
I do.
Who is "I" do?
That's Jan, and I don't know how to find the hand.
Okay, Jan, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I have a few questions, and I may have missed the first. One is, of course, every time we talk about charter schools, we want to know if this is taking away money from the public school system, which has been pretty crowded for a very long time. So how is this affecting the funding of our public schools? And two is, how are you in this gym thinking about males and females and the handicapped and disabled as number two? You know, how are they being thought about and programming being fairly allocated and equipment and sports being put in there? And the third is that when you're... Is this gym being retrofitted for the issues of climate change? Are we adding to the gas and oil and doing the same old stuff? Or are we using new materials, wind, solar, all this stuff? I mean, how are we moving forward into the world that many of us are working on trying to go at a time that climate change is in a crisis? Those are my three.
Okay, that... Thank you, Jan. Jahib or Valerie, do you want to speak to the first question about the relationship of the charter school to the New York City public schools and the funding question?
Hi.
Oh.
Yes. So as a charter school, we actually do not receive any facility funding from the city or from the state. We have our, just our per pupil allotment through New York City, through the pass-through, based on their formula. And that, so our funding hasn't, you know, it doesn't change. We just still have our per pupil allotment.
That's good. And then there was a question there about the allocation of the space between girls' sports...
Girls, handicapped.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so I can speak to part of it, and then Ms. Jacobson can speak to part of it. And so in terms of males and females, we have an equal number of sports teams for males and females. And so we do have changing facilities that will accommodate any sex. And so that takes care of that particular piece of it. But again, the space is open to the community. We do have the gender-neutral bathrooms, and it is something, not only that we just have, but it's something that we talk about, that we teach our students acceptance, what this means, what current laws are, state and federal, and so forth. So I think that's the short answer to the gender piece. The second piece is the, I believe, American with Disabilities Act. And so we are able to accommodate any student that has a disability. And Ms. Jacobson can talk a little bit more about that piece.
Yes, whether it's students who have a 504 for some sort of health need or any specialized service necessary on their IEPs, we are equipped for that. And the building, we do have an elevator, and there is access to this new space straight from the ground floor from our existing building. And we also have our PE teachers, many of whom who are trained in having physical education activities for students regardless of their needs.
Okay. Ed, are you able to speak to the final question from Jan about the clock? Issue and resiliency?
Sure. Well, as architects, we always try to design and specify green materials and to try to minimize anything, you know, the contribution to the carbon footprint. So what we're proposing here, we're moving into the construction document phase. And as we develop the design, we will make every effort to make sure that this building is as climate-friendly as possible.
I guess the...
Are there any other questions?
Yes, please, Madam Chair, Steve Chesler.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I had a similar type of question in terms of, yeah, just on the environmental side. You know, being that this is a school, it would be great if it really had an example and way to impact the students as well as, you know, the environment by having, you know, forward-thinking technologies, either with the roof, solar, green roofs that could both serve to mitigate, you know, climate issues but also serve as an educational tool as well. You know, really urge you to do that. And the other part of it is, I was wondering about the legacy uses of the site. You know, prior to being a garage, you know, what the prior uses were? Are there, you know, potential environmental remediation that has to be done or to be wary of?
I can speak to that last point briefly. We, as part of the environmental analysis of the project, they did have to do the standard Phase 1 and Phase 2 investigation of the site. That's happened, that's been completed. Um, there were no issues of concern. It's it's been in all all a garage and so sort of what what warehouse for a short period of time. It was taken for a long time, but there were no no noxious uses um this 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 door. And I think your first question was about the u- the u- the use of any green technologies in the building. And is there anything else that you want you want to sh- share on that?
Right, I mean, just uh by virtue of um this building needing or having to uh comply with the. Current building codes, energy codes and whatnot, uh, this will be a very green building. I mean, there's uh the the energy code will require that um. That uh the new, any new roofing be um uh energy can uh compliant, um, you know, the latest R values. Uh, there is a mandate from the city to um provide green roofing um anywhere where there is not mechanical. Equipment or terrace or terracing. So um, just by com- by complying with DOB codes, we will. We uh building codes, we will be a a very green building.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Uh, Chair, this is Marie Lanza. I'm sorry, I had a little problem getting on. I just want you to know, I just let you know that I'm on. Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. Um, there's no other question. Thank you, uh, Patrick and your team for your presentation. Have a good evening.
Um, Madam Chair, this is William Vega. Can you hear me?
Who?
William Vega.
Okay.
Just letting you know, same problems, I'm on the cell phone, but I'm here now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is um. A tw- twenty twenty-six Marcy Avenue, new application.
Hi, good evening, Brooklyn Community Board One.
Hi.
My name is Ben Savitsky. I'm a Bernstein Rado and Savitsky. Um, I know you have a long agenda tonight, so I will try to keep this as uh as quick as possible. Um, here tonight to introduce you to Brooklyn Art House. They are a community-forward art space. That will premiere original and alternative multimedia art. With this space, the co-founders are are aiming to curate and commission art pieces and performances that are going to highlight. A diverse array of local and international artists and their work. Their hope for this center is to establish a connection between artists and audiences through the performance spaces and a cafe and bar in a lobby area. That's really the reason we're here. We are applying for a full on-premises liquor license to be used as part of the operations of this new performing arts center. As an amenity to the space and an amenity to the community. Um, I'll take you briefly through the application if 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 that's uh okay, and then I'll open it up to questions. Um, the space, as I mentioned, is at twenty dash twenty-six Marcy Avenue in Williamsburg. It's on Marcy Avenue. It's between Hope Street and Metropolitan Avenue. It's uh right next to the BQE. There's an entrance to the BQE at Hope Street. It's right there. We submitted a packet for your through review, and I'll just quickly take you through the space. So the center has uh a ground floor and a cellar. Cellar's just for storage. Ground floor is for patrons. Um, the ground floor has two performance spaces. There's a large room and a small room. The large room has a seating capacity of around a hundred and fifty audience members. Um, this is going to be used as a theater for dance performances, for film showings, um rehearsals. The smaller space is for solo performances, piano performances, small trios, art exhibitions, um, and just general talks. Uh, the connection between these two spaces is a lobby area and a lounge area and this bar cafe area that's going to be operated throughout the day. Um, the idea is for the community to meet artists. Um, it's a place for the community to gather, to enjoy some food with some art surrounding them. It's really an amenity, not only to the performance art space, but also to the community. Um, Alex Orthwein and Isaac Bush are the co-founders of Brooklyn Art House. They are on the call tonight if you have questions about the method of operation. But specifically, what we are applying for um is only one stand-up bar in the space. That's this lobby cafe area. It has fourteen bar stools. There are various tables and chairs in the area. It's a total of a hundred and eighty-one seats in the place. Eighty-six of them are in this lounge and lobby bar area. The rest of them are for audience members in the performance spaces. We're going to be having background music, live music and DJ as part of our method of operation for the performing arts spaces. There's no outdoor space associated with this application. There are no windows that are operable, and the operator is working with an acoustician to ensure that uh. Noise and sound does not permeate, and that sound attenuating materials are used once this place is built out. Our proposed hours of operation are seven AM to two AM. The seven AM is the opening of the cafe. That's going to be open all day. Performances start later in the day, and there are usually two shows if there are shows on a day, and they go until around midnight. The two AM gives us the opportunity for people to come out, to gradually leave after having a glass of wine or a beer. The space is going to have security. Um, there's going to be art on the wall, so it's important to have security. They're also going to be checking tickets. And directing traffic as people, pedestrian traffic as people leave. Um, that's really it. Alex and Isaac are very excited to bring this center to the community. They think it's going to be a wonderful benefit to the community. Uh, a place where residents can connect with art and artists in their own neighborhood. And um, I think they wanted me to tell you that they, there's also an exhibition going on right now of a a local New York City artist that uh they invite you all to come down and see. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is NYC. Uh, Department of Sanitation, Richard Day.
Hi there. Um, thanks for having me. Sorry. Um, so uh, my name is Richard Day. I work uh at the Department of Sanitation on the curbside composting program. And I'm just here to uh make a brief announcement about our uh special uh fall leaf collection that's upcoming. Um, this is a yearly collection that we do that allows folks to um basically give us their leaves on these two Sundays each year. Um, we'll collect them and we'll turn them into compost. So even if you don't participate, you know, in the brown bin program, the curbside program. This is still an opportunity for you to actually prevent your yard waste from going to landfill. So, um. The collection will take place on um Sunday, sorry, what's the date? Sorry, November, Sunday, November twentieth, uh, and Sunday, December fourth. Um, you can set out your leaves in a paper lawn and leaf bag, which we may be able to send to your office. Um, or you can set about an unlined rigid containers. So that would just be like a regular garbage pail, just with no bag or any sort of thing in there. Um, so our workers can just collect them without an issue. Um, once we do have a flyer, I'll be sure to send it to the board. Right now, we're a little, um, we're a little early. Like I said, the dates are in November and December, but just wanted to get out ahead of things this year. Um, so we'll send that flyer to the board once we have it. Um, and I believe that you should all be getting mailers as well um in the coming months. Um, for now, though, I can leave you with the link uh to the website with the current information. And that's all. That's all I've got. So, um, I hope that was nice and uh brief enough for all of you. Um, I'll leave uh my information in the chat as well. Um, so thanks for your time, and I hope you all can compost your leaves. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Richard. Have a good evening. Um, Joanna, is there any speakers on liquor licenses?
No, Ms. Fuller, there's no speakers on liquor licenses.
Thank you, Joanna. Um, we invited all of our elected officials. Uh, to our meeting tonight because we need guidance and procedure and uh need to talk about budget. As everybody know, our district manager, Jerry Esposito, retired on September the first. So I would like to take this time to allow our elected officials to address us before we go into our regular board meeting. Is the is the uh borough president here?
Yes, good evening, Ms. Fuller. Uh, it is I, Gregory Lewis, who is counsel for the Brooklyn Borough President, and I'm going to be. Speaking on his behalf this evening. Um, the borough president asked me to come on as his counsel. Uh, because he wants you all to know that we we understand. Uh, losing a district manager and obviously one with as extensive and longstanding experience as Mr. Esposito. Uh, is a moment where you are going to need help and guidance. I'm here at Borough Hall, one of the people who is in charge of the process. And so uh, we'll be here to walk Community Board One through every stage of the process. Already, in response to what you've sent us, we've sort of reached out and have coordinated among the city agencies. To give you the guidance on what you need for this process. Um, very simply, there are two major aspects to it. There is the budget element that uh we know that the Office of Management and Budget has given you an answer, and I think that part of the budget process. Has an element of negotiation that we're going to help navigate, uh, help you navigate. And it also has an aspect that um relates to all of the mechanical pieces, sort of hiring somebody here in the city of New York. We're going to help walk you through that. We're going to make sure that every single agency. Uh, that assists us here at the Office of of Borough President and every other city agency. Is working with you to answer all of your questions, including some of your HR questions. Uh, I know that the Law Department has responded to us to sort of give or be available to sort of give guidance on some of the. Employment hourly questions that are associated with this. Um, that is the clear message. We are here to help you. We're here to navigate, help you navigate this process. We're going to ensure that you have all of the resources. That's why I'm on, because I'm the person who does this here. Um, and so uh, with that sort of spirit, we wanted to sort of. Keep the the messaging at that and to sort of know that in the weeks to come. We're going to be working very closely together on on that process, just to let you know that. And thank you, uh, Chairperson Fuller.
Is there anybody at Borough Hall specifically assigned to work with us, uh, Greg?
That would be me. The councils of the Borough President will be working.
So we won't be working with HR?
Uh, every matter here at the uh Borough President's Office, I also have an HR element. Everything that relates to this hiring process is perfectly within my wheelhouse. That's why I am the person assigned to work.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other elected uh here that would like to address this issue?
Uh, you know, I, this is Lincoln Wrestler. I'm happy to jump in. I, you know, you're in great hands with Greg, and we're fortunate to have. Uh, such a close friend in Borough Hall, uh, who knows our community well, who lives in Community Board One. Uh, and uh, he couldn't have assigned a better person to help us through this process. If there's anything that our office can do um in supporting the Borough President and you all in making sure that. We're getting clarity from OMB on the budgetary situation and any interim solutions that we want to identify to. Fill staffing needs. Um, you know, uh, forty-five years of service is something to celebrate and appreciate. Uh, uh, all that Jerry has done for our community, comes with a lot of vacation time, so that poses some challenges for. Any agency that loses, any city agency that loses somebody who's um accumulated so much service. Um, but certainly happy to try and navigate the bureaucracy the best we can uh to make sure that CB One has what it needs to to be successful.
Thank you, Lincoln. Uh, I know Jennifer's on. Jennifer would like to speak now.
Sure. Um, I don't, however, Chair, I don't have anything else to add to this because I think, I think the Borough President and his team has got that covered. Um, is it okay if I make any other announcements?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair, and uh happy uh, what is almost Hispanic Heritage Month to everyone, um, and happy start of the school year. Um, again, just want to uh thank the the Chair, Chair Fuller, um, and the board, and just to kind of echo what my colleague, Councilmember Wrestler, said. Um, you know, Jerry's service here um at the Community Board and in the community overall will be missed, so. Of course, I'm happy to be helpful and lend a hand i- if and where you you need me um to fill this uh, to fill this position. Um, I just want to give some office updates. I know many of you have been uh either connected with me directly, have seen me. So I just want to make sure I'm making this announcement in one concise place. Um, I want to just give some updates about participatory budgeting. Uh, District Thirty-four will be doing participatory budgeting again. Um, we are just starting the process, so you haven't missed anything. If you would like to participate, if you have any questions about anything that I say between now and the time I finish, you can email. D thirty-four at council dot N Y C dot G O V. Um, and for folks that follow me on socials, it's all of my handles are Jen Gutierrez N Y C. So you can be updated there, or you can also sign up for our e-blasts, where I'll give you more of that information. But PB is a democratic process where folks get to tell me how to spend one million dollars of our capital money. Um, all of CB One has been participating in PB for at least eight years. I think it's been an extremely successful program in funding our schools. Funding our parks, our streets. Um, so uh, please give us your ideas. I believe Councilmember Wrestler, you're doing PB also this year? Yes, exactly. So you have two members that are participating, bringing it back to the district. Um, so please utilize this as an opportunity. To tell us how to spend your tax dollars. Um, next, uh, I wanted to just announce that my office has been working diligently on a D thirty-four. Trash Task Force, or Trash Force, as we are calling it. It's been really helpful. Um, so some folks here and some, I've gotten some messages forwarded from Community Board One, um, which has been great. So essentially, because there was a two-year gap of DSNY services, even though we did restore it in this last budget. What we've seen has been a huge increase um in illegal dumping, trash. Um, it's been terrible. I I I know, I live in, personally live in Bushwick, but I know what it's like for for Williamsburg. Um, and so the Trash Force is a way for the community to tell me where the hotspots are. I was really proud to fund ACE through the clean book, through the um cleanup initiative at the City Council. And like I said, DSNY had twenty-two dollar, twenty-two million dollars in restorations. So what that means is that basket collection is back up. If there are hotspots, if there are parts of your street where you're seeing an uptick in. Littering and trash, alternate side parking isn't full of fact, but enforcement is a problem. Um, so trash is still accumulating. But if you're in my district, p- please email us at D thirty-four at council dot N Y C dot gov. Um, we are able to send out ACE to raise it to DSNY, and in many instances, uh, clean it up ourselves. We have a little base of volunteers um that are keeping true to the pandemic, where we saw a lot of volunteer cleanup groups. We're still doing that. So if you want to get involved, or if you have a hotspot that you want me to know about, please email us. Um, the next piece is, of course, um, I wanted to raise this. I know it's really relevant to folks, is MTA's uh work on Lorimer. And Metropolitan, as well as Union, uh, throughout the next year and a half while they're instill- um, installing these elevators. I took a tour there last week um with uh one of the homeowners, Lisa Suma. I know there are a ton of problems. MTA has responded to a few. I will be sharing those via email, uh, Chair Fuller, so that you can get it out to to your board members. Um, but I am working diligently with both, a- as well as the Assemblywoman, Assemblywoman Gallagher, as well was on the tour, working diligently with MTA and DSNY. I literally got off the phone with them today. What's going on is that homeowners are asked to move their trash. From uh Lorimer, because that's closed for construction to Metropolitan, and we've seen um a lack of pickup from DSNY. Uh, recycling day is not being picked up, and there's a ton of trash. So again, bring that to me. We are working with them. In that instance where we took a tour, the the pickup was made um that afternoon. So. Working uh to improve that for all of our residents. Um, lastly, I just want to talk about uh the migrants and the conversation of folks that. Uh, are coming from Texas. I don't know if, I do know that the board was informed, I'm not sure if if every member knows, but there is an emergency shelter. Uh, in my district in CB One. It's located on Cook Street. Um, and families were moved in as of July seventeenth. There are about eighty-eight families. Um, there are close to, I believe it's a little over a hundred school-aged children. All of them have been enrolled in D fourteen schools. I do have to lift up our local schools because these are all families um that do not speak English. These are all families, many who did not have identification, and were able to successfully enroll all of them in either PS two fifty-seven, PS one forty-seven, and MS fifty. So I do want to give a shout out to our D fourteen schools that did their thing. They showed up and they registered every single school-age kid, which. Um, if you consider the trauma that they've experienced, this is one silver lining for these families. Uh, my office will be working uh on a resource event. I would love to have CB One there um at the end of this month to be able to continue to. Connect these families with services. Like I mentioned, many are here without identification. Um, and they not only need access to um different benefits, but they just need to know where some of these services are. A lot of them are enrolled in NYC Care for Health Insurance. But if you want to be helpful, if you want to help us donate strollers and diapers, which is a huge need for a lot of these families, please contact me. We are trying to pull all of these resources together, and we will be working with our colleagues in government. Um, and then lastly, as the Chair for Technology, I have a hearing scheduled on Monday, uh, the nineteenth at one PM. It will be about the Internet Master Plan. It is solely about accessibility. It is solely about accessibility, which this administration is so inclined to roll out. I will send the information to the board. You can come and testify virtually or in person. But I would love to have representation there from the Community Board, because our city is owed a master plan. Our city is owed a pathway to a greater accessibility and greater transparency from our internet providers. And I would love to have you all participate. So again, email d34@council.nyc.gov, or you can call our office. We are fully open for constituent services, 718-963-3141. And I just want to say Abe Lugo from my office is my new Williamsburg organizer. I know he's on the call somewhere, but you are also welcome to email him, augo@council.nyc.gov. And that's it. Chair Fuller, thank you so much for all this time. My God. Any questions, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Get the information to us and we'll get it out to the district. Is there any board members that want to ask any of our representative, any question pertaining to the retirement of Jerry?
De'Allis, I would like to say something. This is Del Teague. I do want to thank I do want to thank you, the district, the Borough President and Lincoln Ressler for being so interested. I just want to, in our plight with replacing Jerry. And I would like to just stress that the the community is really and the community, I think, feels that this is an extremely dire and pressing issue. Certainly, those of us who are members of the Community Board hope that the city understands how important it is and how desperate we are to be able to have a replacement for Jerry. And also, not just that, but additional help. Right now, we have literally one person who has to take care of keeping the office open and recording and all of the committee meetings. This clearly is not possible. I don't think it's even, you know, I have concerns about the legality. But I'd like to say one more thing in terms of the budget. Because I will say that that was a punch in the gut to hear that we might not be able to fill Jerry's position. Because the situation is that, and the process is that apparently that, you know, Jerry was able to accrue enough annual leave and sick leave to the point where it would leave us with no ability to fill his position. And I work for the state. We aren't allowed to just take unlimited amount of annual leave. And if, I just question the wisdom and the appropriateness of having a system where there's, you know, staff members are permitted to accrue annual leave and sick leave to the extent where there's no budget left to fill their position. I think this is, I just think this is totally untenable. And I'm glad to hear that it's somewhat negotiable. I think that I would like to press for very, very, very strong efforts on everyone's part to negotiate this, because this doesn't make any sense at all. It makes, to me, it's like, it's a scandal. So that's my position. Thank you.
Can I join Del Teague on that? Because I'm sitting here saying, what? How, I mean, how did this happen? And I don't know who's responsible. I mean, I'm just shocked. So on one hand, I want to figure out how do we honor a person that did 45 years of work? Because I think it's awful to have people, Anne Marie Bueno, who was here forever, people that really did important work. So I'm wanting to celebrate, and then we're hearing this other thing. So this is a pretty shocking situation. And I don't know what powers the Executive Board, the Chair, the CB One has. But this is really unbelievable situation. So I just stand with Del in being absolutely amazed. So that is the first place, Jennifer and Lincoln and Antonio, that we, our new person, I forgot your name, that's going to help. But we need quick guidance. This is not next month. This is quite unbelievable.
If I may. I have my hand up. May I speak, Chair?
Who is that? Identify yourself, please.
Katie Denny Horowitz.
Go ahead, Katie.
Thank you. You know, I worked for this city for a number of years, and I'm not sure how it worked when, with whatever union Jerry was in. But in my experience, usually comp time was approved by a supervisor, right? And otherwise, it didn't roll over from year to year. So I would be curious, because the board has so much inquiry into that accrual process for this particular position because of how it's impacting us. So that's a question that I think we have. And for the elected officials, I don't know how this meeting is going to go in terms of if this is the only period we're talking about the transition. I might speak for some other folks to hear, that I'm very relieved to hear. You know, Gregory, that you're involved and that we're going to have your guidance. That is wonderful news. And I'm curious if you have any advice for immediate next steps before we leave this meeting today? For example, you know, there was some ideas about a hiring subcommittee or something like that, that can this board do tonight? If you are going to be working with this board, you know, I think the Executive Committee in recent meetings, you know, this was a surprise to everybody. And there were a lot of questions. And there was a lot of questions, not only about how it was handled, but also how it was communicated to the full board. So I wanted to emphasize the engagement of the entire board, perhaps through a subcommittee, to work with your office, Gregory, on sort of managing this transition. And I think that there would probably be a number of board members who would be interested in being involved and engaged.
Go ahead, Chair. Go ahead, Greg.
So we are crystal clear on that concern and understand and share it here at the Office of Brooklyn Borough President. To sort of say, two pieces of this. First, I think the immediate navigating, the sort of, as Councilmember Ressler was sort of saying, the city bureaucracy, the aspects of this that are complicated are, I think, the first piece. The Office of Management and Budget has responded that they would love to have a conversation with Community Board One on what can be done here, what are sort of budgetary possibilities? That should be immediately seized. There are probably already bodies in Community Board One under its bylaws, such as the Executive Board, that have the power to sort of continue doing this. But if you all feel that it, you know, to Ms. Horowitz's point, you want to create a subcommittee that's specializing in this, that's perfectly fine. Connecting, having that navigation, having that conversation with OMB is the first step. The second piece of this that is very important to the Borough President and is one of the reasons why I'm working with CB One and we are generally working with other community boards in general. During the orientation on June 23rd here in July 12th, I conducted those. I did the presentations on many of the legal aspects. And one of the things that we talked about is the Community Board as an employer. Our number one goal, and this is to Ms. Teague and Ms. Peterson's other points, is coming out of this process also. We will absolutely are working, going to be working with Community Board One so that there are, there's crystal clarity, so that there's a lot more sense of what those employer aspects look like. And what those employer aspects look like as they relate to the question of time accrual and how can that be managed, right? That's not an obvious piece. That's exactly why we did the training and we sort of wanted to highlight the role of a community board as an employer, as something that's a focus on us. And it's something we're going around. So coming out of this process, CB One will understand with our working together exactly what is necessary to prevent this in the future and sort of as a general matter to ensure that there is oversight. We're going to make sure that that is being done. That is a sort of priority, because it's part of what community boards need to be able to thrive. As to the point of Ms. Teague, you know, if we're in this position, it sort of affects your ability to sort of serve constituents locally, right? But so the first piece, following up with OMB, seizing that invitation to have that conversation, because OMB is the agency that best understands the budgetary processes that are some options, some possibilities. Not going to be easy. I'll be clear about that. But they are possibilities in the way that the city budget works. And they're the ones who are going to have guidance, and I'll be there to help you navigate OMB. And then as we come out of this particular moment and be hired for the position, or we figure out the plan for that going forward, I'll be there to make sure that CB One is, there's much more resources and it's much more clarity on the role of being an employer and all of the controls that exist there.
And if our office can help in any way, we're certainly happy to. And make sure that, you know, with, in supporting Greg and the Borough President, that the city agencies are responsive. These are not circum, while Jerry's tenure is, you know, was the longest of any district manager, as we all know well. This is not an unprecedented dynamic. And, you know, we've had many district managers over the years that have served for years upon years and departed with significant vacation time built up and accrued, and has led to a notable period without a district manager in place at those other community boards. Community Board Two, right now in downtown Brooklyn, you know, had a district manager that was in place for over a dozen years. And when he departed, he had many, many months of vacation time accrued. And they have still, are yet to replace him in that role. So, you know, precedence is going to matter here. The experience of other community boards. With, you know, Greg's help and our help and Jen's help, we'll find the best creative solutions we can to try to make sure that Community Board One has the staff and support you all need to continue to be successful. But, you know, this is a dynamic that is unfortunately in place, that when city workers leave, who have accrued phenomenal sums of vacation, it can pose serious challenges to replacing their line. And for a budget that is as tiny as the community boards is, it is really, really hard to navigate. And so I just don't want to sugarcoat this or to make it sound any better than it is. This is going to be a thorny situation for us to navigate. We'll do, you know, under the Borough President's leadership, our office, Jen's office, we'll all do our best to help support any way we can.
Thank you, Lincoln. I'm glad to know that everybody here understands the dire need that we are in for staff, because our elected officials know the volume of work that has to be done in this office. And we cannot, we cannot hold out long, much longer with one person doing three people jobs. So we've got to work on this, and we got to, we got to work on it fast. Any other question from board members?
Madam Chair, I have my hands up. I don't know if you saw that. Hi, Sante Michel here. A couple of questions. First, a reminder, I just want to remind everybody that Joanna, she's a mother, and she's a mother of a young child. And I called the office to ask some information. They said, oh, you sound tired. And I don't want to say oldish child, but the child is very young. So understood, you know, just for everybody to understand that Joanna is not a student. I can see Councilmember there with child. She has the same issue. And so it is, I believe mandatory, and that's my question to our public official. Is it possible to have like exceptional financial assistance to hire additional people that could assist Joanna? Or she, I understood Jerry has said the last Executive Board meeting that she was even fully qualified to be a district manager. So I know that she knows everything there. Is that a possibility? Are the council office, sorry for my ignorance, or the Borough President's office has additional exceptional funds that can be dedicated as the community board here and, you know, in our district? It's definitely under a lot of pressures, land use, tons of SLA application. Just to tell you that there are going to be the next few days, 47 SLA legal license and 67 renewal. And that requires a tremendous amount of work. So together with all the other work the community board has to do. So my question is, how can that help can be put in effect in the financial term? Is that something can happen very fast?
Yeah, parenthood is not a disability. And somebody who is a parent is permitted to, is able to do their job just as well as anybody else. So I'm not exactly sure what you were implying there about somebody being a young mother, being unable to do their job. I didn't, I took that. I don't, I'm not sure that I did. But that being said, we're happy to explore with the Borough President and with OMB if there are any creative solutions that we can try to identify to provide additional support to the board. You know, this is a challenging scenario, but we'll do our best to try to be helpful.
Yeah, it's not.
Because it would be a good idea if the Lincoln, if the if the elected officials had some discretionary money that they could give us while we're going through this period where we could hire somebody.
Yeah, it's tough, Chair. This is a, so it's a little tough for a couple of reasons. One is because we're, it's kind of in the middle of the budget of the fiscal year. And those discretionary allocations are, have already been made. So that's why I think it's going to really take us working really closely with the Borough President's office. And in this instance, really talking to the administration. This is a really, like Lincoln shared, I mean, this is not the only case, but it is exceptionally unique because of the amount of time that you will be out, will be without someone. And Joanna is great. She's been doing this work for a long time, is wonderful. But she needs support. The Community Board needs support. So let us, give us a little bit of time to kind of see what we can do. I know that for me personally, it's hard on the discretionary front, because we're in the middle of the fiscal year. But I'd love to brainstorm with the Borough President and with Councilmember Ressler as well to see. I get it, I hear you. I know it's so important to be fully staffed, truly.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I want to clarify.
I thought that your discretionary funding was already allotted. But we're going to, we're going to try everything, you know. Thank you so much, Jennifer. Yes, go ahead, Sante.
I just want to clarify to Councilmember Ressler, I didn't intend to be a disability, but I'm assuming there were three people in the office and you have late meetings and time until midnight. Probably the staff could have decided to do certain night and certain meeting and alternating. And having just Joanna will put her on that pressure, having meeting at night, every night. And then she'll be the only person to run the meeting. That's what I meant. So it's not a disability, but put on a day, opening the office in the morning, and then continuing at night running the meeting. So not a disability, but an issue to handle all those multiple tasks day and night by one person.
Thank you, thank you, Matella. You're absolutely right.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
It's going to be a big burden for her to work on at night. It's a big burden, thank you for bringing that out.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you to the elected officials for your kind offer to assist. And it is very kind, as well as to the Borough President. Greg, I don't know if you're still around. This question is not necessarily something that's going to address the immediate need, but something that can perhaps prevent this from happening in the future. So I know that in some organizations or in some instances, you're able to cap the number of hours that a person can roll over, which is, this is what's happening in this situation, is that the amount of hours that were rolled over and the accruals are just like so exorbitant that at this point, it's going to impede our ability to hire someone, because it's just not, the money has been spent already. So moving forward, have you heard of the case where those number of hours of accruals can be capped yearly so that the person has to use their annual leave and perhaps roll it over till, let's say, to the end of March? And if you don't use it at the end of March, it converts to sick time. Because I know that sick leave is not paid out upon leave. So is that something that's unheard of? Because I think it's something that, that we should implement moving forward. Because this is a problem that no one should be faced with again.
Madam Chair Morrison, may I speak to that? So exactly, I think you're highlighting exactly what I'm also describing as to where we're going to go as we come out of this. That this is to sort of allow CB One to understand its role as an employer, everything that can be done in terms of charter powers. For example, setting the district manager.
For example, uh, setting the, the district manager's duties, which is one of the parts of that, uh, to set policy. I, I think to your particular question, again, the specifics are complicated. Because, um, at the, the, the city level, uh, this is the sort of good part and the carrot which we're proud. We have a city that is very generous and has a, a, a spirit of the sort of, you know, winds on the ground here of the labor movement. That sort of creates a lot of, I call them entitlements, or things that are hardly found earned by working individuals. The catch is, of course, a lot of these rules create or have strict legal limitations, things that can't be done. And sort of have things that are flexible, that are policy driven. We will work with you to ensure that you are clear on what is within your power as a policy and what is within the law and everything that can be made or done policy wise. To prevent something like this from happening again is something that you receive advice, you'll sort of receive, as I said, we're bringing resources. D C A S, we're going to ensure that they are showing up here and explaining to you exactly the difference between what is legally required under the state civil service law. And, uh, the city equivalent and what is a policy question where in independent city agency, like the community board, you are independent city agency. That is what we are constantly here to empower you, right? That, you know, policy related questions will give you guidance and by all means, implement policies that, um, sort of can prevent this. And I sort of think that's definitely going to be part of the broader work. And I said, that is a borough, uh, community board wide Brooklyn initiative. It's something that's very dear to the borough president's heart because he recognizes that community boards have been left. Uh, and many times without guidance on what it means to be an employer, which is one of the roles, one of the critical roles as we can see here. Because without, um, you know, resources and assistance on that role, you can't do your ordinary work. I'm hearing these liquor license application, you'll have U L R, you know, having served this community, um, you know, as a community lawyer for, for years, for about a decade. Uh, I'm very much aware of, this is one of the busiest, uh, community districts in terms of work. And, and, you know, that employer role is a critical part about meeting that. And we're here to give resources, help and guidance on how you can do that to, to prevent situations that, you know, inhibit you from serving the public.
Madam Chair, I have.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, Tess.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, thank you, Gregory and, uh, the council members for being here to address this. And, um, my, my colleagues really just, um, stating just how devastating and shocking this whole situation is. Um, and, well, you know, what's really coming to mind here, just, I think, sides just finding it some way, you know, to fund, um, you know, you know, some sort of replacement mechanism here. But it's just the, um, yeah, the controls and the communication between, um, you know, you know, district manager, assistant district manager. And the board and the, you know, the budget committee, you know, on a regular basis, on, you know, an annual basis about, about salary and vacation. And there was discussion of overtime, for understand that our, the, the board staff is paid overtime and curious what that is for. Like if they're, if they're, um, you know, just for our in-person board meetings, committee meetings, and then for our web app, you know, for our remote meetings, um, is that considered overtime? And so just, I feel like that should be a part of our, our, our internal board conversations in terms of organizing and thinking, thinking about budgets on an annual basis. Because, you know, I, I want to, you know, put, absolutely not put this on you, Maria, but, you know, for many, many years, our board, uh, our internal board budget committee didn't, didn't meet. And then it just, you know, recently, last few years started meeting. But I feel like there, the, the environment did not lend itself to robust, um, sharing of information with the board staff and the, um, you know, with the committee. And so I think, you know, you know, we look, we love for guidance and may, you know, revise our, our board law, our bylaws and our, our policies. Um, but I feel like it is a board, we really got to, you know, really get the bull by the horns and, um, you know, just, you know, just not, not allow this to, you know, to, to occur going forward. Just, um, yeah.
Steve, I disagree with you saying that the board budget committee did not meet for years. That is incorrect. Uh, Greg, anybody else want, I think, you know, it might be a good idea rather than, uh, people accruing all this time. Because they have to attend meetings after they done worked all day. Might be a good idea to start paying them for overtime rather than let them accrue all this time if it's going to cause problems like this.
Well, as long as I, for, for years, when I was on the board, that committee never met and.
I don't, Greg, I mean, Steve, that is not true. That is not true. Ask Steve Weisberg.
He's capital, he's capital budget, talking about the board budget committee that Marie Viera, Marie Viera chairs. But I'm curious about, does it like when the.
Long as I've been here, all committees met, I've always encouraged committees to meet. I ask them every year to send in a schedule for the whole year of their meeting dates. Anybody else have any questions?
Uh, I'd only just say, I think more to Maria's point from a moment ago, and I, I really echo everything in Greg's response as being totally spot on. You know, within the flexibility of what you're allowed to do as it relates to city workers, these are good things to think about for future practices. Unfortunately, these are not things that you can change retroactively. And so, um, that's just the reality of the situation we find ourselves in today. And it's just worth kind of acknowledging that. Um, but using this as a moment to think ahead and look forward to how do we do better in the future to try to mitigate some of these circumstances.
It's true, since we have two boards in the same mess.
That's right. And others.
They're trying to make some changes.
That's right. I mean, I, C B two, just to be clear, our neighbor to the south, which is the, I, I represent an even larger percentage of than, than C B one. Has been with one staff member for a year and it has been really hard. And she's phenomenal and they've managed, but it has been a, a real challenge. Uh, so I just, again, this is not an unprecedented scenario. This is a challenging situation. Um, but one that many community boards have unfortunately found themselves in and, and one that, you know, merits us to think through structural solutions. So that we don't continue to be in this scenario time and again, when a longtime community, uh, district manager, uh, departs.
And, and to council member rest of his point, I just wanted, I may, uh, just sort of to emphasize that. Again, at this office, uh, I don't think it's a secret to anyone that one of the people in the district manager's office is now our director of community boards here at Community, uh, Borough Hall. So we are very, very understanding of the situation. And I think this is why, especially for this scenario, uh, this is why your, your, your borough president sent his council to sort of work with you all. To sort of make sure that we are very much aware of this situation, what it means. We're very much aware of the difficulty. We know what C B two has been going through rather. As we just sort of stare out of our office, so to speak, that is the community board for where we sit. So we are very, very much aware of this. And as I sort of said, the most important thing is we are here to help and support. In that sense, it's going to be okay. It's, it's going to be, no sugarcoating the budget issue. But as I sort of said, there are places that, but most importantly, we are here to help navigate and get the resources. Because we understand the urgency of it and that's why I'm here. And I think, um, you know, uh, and I'm going to be working with you going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. So Greg, you're saying that our next step should be to meet with O M B? And you and whoever.
Yes, community, C B one should immediately take up O M B on the offer to meet. Because that is the most important aspect to discuss. The process for what can be done with budgets after they are enacted. And when we know that there are series of, that, that budget's about to be used up on, uh, personnel costs. That is by far the most important thing to do. That's this, that's the first point. Because we need to sort of see what can be done there and, um, be perfectly honest with you. That process is Byzantine to us too. We rely on O M B. We do exactly what O M B tells us. Nobody pretends to try to understand how the budget works because it doesn't really matter. It's whatever O M B says is, is for the most part. So meeting with O M B is the most urgent thing to do. Set your time and, uh, y'all want me there, I'll make sure that I'm there.
Well, we, we asked, we asked O M B to attend this meeting.
Um, I think it's more important that you meet with O M B.
I understand what you're saying.
To then they show up.
But I just want you to know, we did ask them to come to this meeting.
Oh, no, I'm aware, uh, you know, Chairperson Fuller, and I know that they, uh, responded in writing and what they told you is, he, though, that's what you need to know. But the second part of what they told you, let's talk, is the more important part. Because they've described the problem to you all, you understand the problem, but talking about what can be done is by far the more important thing to do. So I would say to seize on that immediately.
Yeah, he extended the island branch. We'll follow up. I just wanted to make sure that I understood you correctly. Is there any other questions?
And if you'd like our office to participate, we're happy to join any meetings with O M B or any other city agencies to try and help advocate for the board.
Okay, well, you know, if the board agreed, we'll invite everybody again when we have to meet them.
Only if it's helpful.
Okay.
I question. I can't see anybody, so I don't know if I'm jumping on somebody's head.
We can see you.
Okay, is the, um, is this the opportunity? I always try to look, uh, I work a lot on disaster and stuff like that. So usually you try to see when a bad thing happens, here is the opportunity to make some changes that go beyond what we're talking about. Not just to return to what we had, but to really restore our planning, which used to be, it used to be community planning boards. I was there when all of planning boards were started and, uh, we took the planning word out. And I cannot understand for the life of me, because maybe I'm a small town, midwestern rural person in my blood, since I grew up there. How we can have the best universities in the country, all these planning schools in New York City. And we cannot have a partnership with Pratt and Hunter and Medgar Evers and everybody else. People are dying to do the kind of work that we're talking about that needs to be done. So there has to be some way to restore and develop so that community boards get the planning and input and support. For these incredible community committee, these committees that are working, we need more. And they're there, young students around this city. Is this the opportunity to do that?
So I asked for some student interns? That's what you're saying?
Partnerships and intern partnerships with universities like Pratt, why do we have them there if we can't? I mean, what is the point? Why did we build Medgar Evers? Why did we build Brooklyn College? They're there and we have such vibrant, incredible people and they're dying to do concrete things. People want to. So I'm just saying, it's not just internships, but it's rethinking how the community board works. Each of our committees could come forward with a plan of what we need, uh, which is what the budget committee was, uh, what's her, uh, who's it that's working with us on the overall budget? So we are start putting together real budget. Yes, wonderful, but I'm saying.
I'm sorry, this is me, Gina, Gina Barrows. I'm the chair of the budget committee.
Wonderful doing, but we need to do that on planning. And I know Lincoln and Jennifer, you're all people that believe in planning. Let's restore planning to the community board and use the resources of Brooklyn while we're at it. And they're free.
A good idea, Jan. Anybody else got any questions?
Yes, I, I do. Del Teague, I, I have, I just want to, um, clarify for myself and maybe for all of us. I'm, I think I'm understanding, uh, Gregory, that you're suggesting that we go to O M B. That we have set up a meeting specifically with O M B and you'll be there to help us and guide us. Uh, not to just wait and have O M B come to another community board meeting, but that we actually have a specific meeting that, that is set up. Uh, to start negotiations with O M B. Is, is that what you're suggesting?
Yep, I'm suggesting that we take, you seize the offer to meet with them to talk about options for the budget. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have one more thing I, I want to say, I, I don't know, maybe it's feeding a dead horse, but I, it's, as far as I know, Joanna has never asked for any special treatment. Because she has a child and as a woman who has devoted a good deal of my life to having women be treated as full human beings, full people on their own, you know, on their own, standing on their own two feet. Um, I think it's very important that the, whether she, whether Joanna or any other woman we're, we're dealing with as an employee, whether they have children or they don't have children. That as Lincoln said, having a child is not a disability. And I just want to, um, kind of highlight that. Thank you.
Chair Fuller, may I ask a question? It's Katie Denny Horowitz again.
Thank, uh, drink water. Erin, didn't you want to ask a question?
Um, I just wanted to respond to Jen. Uh, having worked with community boards across the city, um, many do have planning interns from the local colleges and universities. And I think all it would require us to do is to create a job posting, um, and have those students apply. Um, they can often get college credit depending on the university or the college that they're attending for their time as an intern. So that's something that we should look into as a board.
Thank you. Katie?
Um, thank you for saying that, Del. I, I echo those comments, um, you just mentioned. But my question is, um, about the meeting with O M B. Um, it's, it's unclear to me as a community board member, if we're talking about the executive committee meeting with them, the, the full community board. Or as I, um, suggested before, potentially, uh, a sub, a temporary subcommittee dedicated to this transition. So if I, if we could have clarity on that, thank you.
I think we need to, I think we need to find out what direction we can go in before we can, uh, do a, a search committee or subcommittee. And Greg is saying that our first step should be to meet with O M B because what's holding all this up is finances. Go ahead, Greg.
Uh, thank you, Chairperson Fuller. I would, yeah, to that end, just use your executive board committee. Again, not having C B one's bylaws, I am fairly confident the whole point of the executive board, uh, committee. Or executive board and executive committee is to have this sort of power to handle business in between meetings. I would just sort of have the executive, um, committee meet. The short of it is, don't let anything, given the urgency, slow that down. So if the executive committee can't meet, then it's easier tonight to, you know, create an ad hoc committee of folks who can meet or are available. Do that, just don't, I'd use a committee, I'd use just a basic group to have a conversation. Uh, that conversation will allow for every option in the universe of the budget. Um, I can sort of preview here for you that you're likely going to want to have a, after you speak to O M B. The next thing you're going to want to do, and we've already started that process, um, to try to help get them here is you weren't going to want to talk to D C A S. Some of the options that exist, um, potentially about, uh, you know, in terms of the city employee process is something you're going to want to understand. But I would say, you know, meet with us as whatever small group of folks, executive board or whoever is committed. If you want to create an ad hoc committee for this, do that as quickly as possible. Don't let anything slow this down because you want to take that meeting with O M B. You want them to walk you through this budget question, which is the threshold question. That's the most important thing to understand because once you understand those options, then, uh, what are the other possibilities? This, this question about consultancies, other city employees, internships, those are all possible. But they also present their own budgetary questions. So in the O M B meeting, and part of what I would be very happy to be there to be a part of it, is to walk through some of the other things that I think you would want to be thinking about. And have O M B give you some guidance on that.
In other words, we should have this meeting with O, with O M B to decide what our options are. You know, should we have D C A S and, and O M B at the same meeting or do it separately?
I wouldn't, I would not bog down the process by trying to get D C A S on. Just go on the first, take the first, as quick a meeting as you can and you, we, we can help you get D C A S online. That's not, that's not.
Okay, we'll work on it as soon as possible. Is there any other question?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, it's Corey Canton here. Um, it's a bit of a box idea, but, um, would it be possible to use some participatory budgeting funds for this?
Next question again, Corey.
I was wondering if, uh, since earlier it was mentioned that, uh, there's participatory budgeting, uh, for September and October. And, uh, you know, knowing about that process, something that could be voted on. So just wondering if there's any other channel that we could be going through that could give us access to funds quicker than the O M B meeting.
Participatory budgeting funding that our office and Jen's office are making available are for capital projects. So they're not for expense purposes in the hiring of personnel and they are for the next fiscal year, starting July first. So, um, they wouldn't be the, the solution, but we definitely want to think, I don't mean to pour, uh, cold water. But we definitely want to think through other creative ideas for how we could try to fill. want to think through other creative ideas for how we could try to fill gaps and come up with interim solutions while we, um, you know, work through this situation.
Thank you, Russell. Uh, is, is there any other questions? Uh, we have, what, Maya Bake, Baker? See a hand raised? Maya Bake, Bakely? Ryan Coonan?
Hey, um, as I was rereading the, the bylaws today, it stated that the first chair is responsible for doing monthly reports on the work of the district manager. Um, I was curious if there's ever been, I've never, in the, the 10 years I was on the board, I never saw a single report from the first chair about the work of the, the district manager. And I was just curious if Simon has ever done a report. I guess he's listed as the first chair right now, or if there's a current one, or when the last time that report was done. The 10 years I was on, from September of 2010 until just now, I never, I don't recall ever seeing a report on the monthly doings of the district manager.
Is there any other questions?
Is there going to be an answer to the question? Has there ever been a report?
No, there's not going to be an answer to the question, because Simon is not here to answer. And we're not here to go back and dig up stuff. We're here to find solutions. And we don't come up with solutions, then we'd be sitting here all night. We don't need any more controversy. We need solutions. And that's why we're here tonight, for solutions.
Many times when I was on the board, I was told I couldn't do something because the bylaws did not state it, I, like, because of the bylaws. This, this, this executive constantly referred to the bylaws.
Are there any other questions?
We should move on.
Pardon me?
We should move on to the next issue. We'll be here.
Chair.
Well, we don't have another, this is just a discussion with our electors to try to get directions and procedures on how to move forward with rehiring.
Chair, here's Simon, you hear me?
And staff.
Chair, you hear me, Simon?
Madam Chair, Simon is here.
Okay, Simon.
Yeah, I was here all time, I just, I, the problem connecting, but I, I was here all since the 6 o'clock. Thank you.
Michael Chirichello is here too, Madam Chair. Okay, is there any other questions for our elected officials? We know that their time is short, and we, we appreciate the fact that they took time out of their busy schedule to address us, and we don't want to abuse their time. Is there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, uh, Jennifer, uh, Greg, uh, Lincoln, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Oh, go ahead, Greg.
Please, Councilmember Russell.
Does, does Community Board One, did you all ever set up a 501(c)(3)?
What?
Did you all ever set up your own nonprofit?
No.
Great. That might have just been a funding vehicle for different things that we could try to do here to, um, for interim solutions, but we can.
My knowledge, they tried to do it many, many years ago, and they didn't allow it.
There are some community boards that have, unfortunately, it's, it just might have been a way for us to try and funnel resources that could have helped in this situation, but, um, but we'll continue to think on other solutions. I would just, my, everything Greg said, I think is the best guidance you're going to get. I would try to use your elected officials to help push with OMB, with DCAST, with the mayor's team, to try to get the best outcomes we can, and try and come up with interim solutions that can help us through this, um, so that, uh, you all have the support that you need and deserve. And we'll do everything we can to help.
Thank you, Lincoln. We'll certainly invite you to the meeting when, uh, when we can set up a meeting with them. I guess it would depend on their availability and our schedule, if we don't have any meeting scheduled for that night. We'll try to work on it as soon as possible with the, with the agreement of the board. Greg?
Um, I would add nothing other than to wish you all a good evening, but to note, you'll be seeing a lot of me, and you'll be seeing a lot of me soon. As I said, we are here to help navigate, walk you through this situation, give you, make sure you are getting all of the resources and assistance. So, uh, that goodnight is not a goodbye by any means. You'll be seeing me a lot soon, perhaps too much of me. But, uh, there, uh, with that note, wish you all a good night.
Thank you, Greg, and I doubt it, we'll be seeing too much of you. Uh, Jennifer, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think she had to jump at 7:00.
Okay, there's, there's nothing else, no other questions. I thank you for coming out and taking your time to help us, because, you know, it hasn't been easy to navigate this system, and, uh, we're doing the best we can with what knowledge we have. And I really appreciate the knowledge that you guys have imparted, imparted with us tonight, and we will follow up according to your directions. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
That concludes, that concludes our public session. Now, um, can we have the roll call for the, uh, board meeting? Del?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm here, Del.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Gina Barrows?
Here.
Eric Prusaitis?
Here.
Iris Cabrera?
Here.
Philip Caponegro?
Yeah.
Frank Carbone? Stephen Chesler?
Yeah.
Michael Chirichella?
Here.
Teresa Yentziata? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni DiMatto?
Here.
Erin Drinkwater?
Here.
Arthur Dibonowski?
Here.
Lloyd Feng?
Here.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Here.
Dealice Fuller?
Here.
Crystal Garcia?
Here.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? David Heimlich?
Yeah.
Sabrina Hill? Katie Denny-Horowitz?
Here.
Sonia Iglesias? Moisa Indig? Robert Jeffrey?
Here.
Ozina Kaminski? Corey Canton?
Yeah.
Paul Kelterborn?
Here.
William Claswell?
Here.
Joel Landell? Marie Lanza?
Here.
Jolo? Jolo. Trina McKeva?
Hi, Del, this is Gina Argento, I missed the call. I'm here.
Okay, I got you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, Trina McKeva? Adam Myers?
Here.
Sante Michelli?
Here.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi David Niederman? Karen Yeves? Mary Odomerick?
I'm here.
Janice Peterson?
Here.
Bella Sable? Isaac Soffe?
Here.
Del Teague here. William Vega? William, I know you were here earlier.
William Vega's here, can you hear me now?
William Vega, okay.
Thank you.
Simon Weiser?
Here. You hear me?
Yes, I do. Okay, let me count this now.
Thank you so much, Del. I'm sorry, I, I omitted our moment of silence. Can we have our moment of silence, please? Thank you. Uh, we're going to do our, we're going to do our swearing in with the following people. I call your name, would you raise your right hand and, uh, repeat after me? Stephanie Shavas, Ronan Daly, Lord Finn, Krista Garcia, David Himelich, Sabrina Hill, Robert Jeffrey, Corey Canton, Paul Kelterborn, William Claswell, and Adam Myers. Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please? Okay, I state your name.
Hi, Corey Canton.
Hi, Crystal Garcia.
Do hereby affirm and declare.
Do hereby confirm and declare.
That I will support the constituents of the United, the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution.
The Constitution of the United States.
I will support the constituents of the Constitution of the United States.
The, the Charter of the City of New York.
The Charter of the City of New York.
And the bylaws of Community Board One.
And the bylaws of Community Board One.
Brooklyn, I will faithfully discharge these, the duties.
I will faithfully discharge these duties.
As a member of Community Board One, Brooklyn.
As a member of Community Board One, Brooklyn.
Which I have been appointed.
Which I have been.
Which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Thank you, new board members. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Dealice?
Yes.
How are we saying goodbye to some very important people that have left? Are we just kind of, I mean, we, there's a lot of, uh, sadness tonight. I mean, we have lost Tom Burrows, we've lost Marty Niedelman, we've lost, I'm just saying, how do you want to handle this goodbye? I had.
Right now, I'm going, right now, Jen, I'm going by the agenda, because we're in our board meeting.
So when can we put it on the agenda?
Let's just get to that point later on, Jen.
All right.
Okay, not to, uh, rush you or anything, but.
No, I don't mind. I don't mind.
I'm going by the agenda. I understand, and I know how you do not like to leave people out. That's been made so many contributions to this community. I know that's your passion, and we will get to it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, approval of the agenda?
David Niederman?
Phil Caponegro, second.
Rabbi Niedeman and Phil Caponegro approve the agenda. Approval of the minutes?
Your first time approved the minutes.
Iris Cabrera, taken down. Julia Floster and Iris Cabrera. Okay, uh, public sessions. Can we have the names of the public speakers, please?
Sal Perobik? I do not see Mr. Perobik. The next speaker is Pablo Ramirez. Pablo Ramirez, I do not see him, the list. Allison Schiff? I do not see Allison Schiff. Uh, Frank Lang? Frank Lang is not on the list. Um, Ellen Peskin? Ellen Peskin, you're muted.
I'm here, can you hear me okay? This is Elon Peskin. Hi, my name is Elon Peskin. I am, thank you for having me. I am, uh, I work for a general contractor called Mega Contracting Group. We are the general contractor for the, uh, for the project, Site C, part of the, uh, Brooklyn Triangle Project. Uh, the project is located on Throop Avenue, at the corner of Throop and Bartlett, uh, on Throop to the corner of, uh, Garian, uh, Throop. Um, we are here requesting, uh, a letter of support, uh, from the community board. The Department of Buildings has provided, uh, working hours, um, from 10 a.m., uh, to 5 p.m. on Saturdays, and ironically, um, later hours on weekends is, um, not as good as earlier hours on weekends. So we're, we're bussing a letter of support to start work at 7 a.m., um, on Saturdays. Um, my colleague, Frank Lang, um, from Saint Nick's Alliance, uh, who is, uh, one of the many developers, um, I believe wa, was supposed to be a president, he may be engaged in, uh, another, uh, something else, but, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, and, um, I'm hoping this is something that the board may support.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Frank, just let me know he got bounced out, um, but he is available to, to speak. Frank Lang, he was called but couldn't answer.
Okay. Okay, uh, go ahead, Frank.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, hello, everybody. You, you know me, Frank Lang. I'm with the Deputy Executive Director of Saint Nick's Alliance. We came to the Community Board Saint Nick's Alliance along with our partners, United Jewish Organizations of Wingersburg, Riceboro Community Partners, and Losuris, to talk about the project Elon just discussed. This is the Broadway Triangle. It's a 140-unit building that we are having a groundbreaking tomorrow. I hope Dealice and others are able to attend, and, um, we really would like to be able to get the board's support so we could do the extended hours to try and get as much as of the construction going before winter. We've started, the excavation's going very well, but it would make a huge difference if we could work those extra hours to bring this project. It's 140, um, low-income units, and it would really make a difference for the community. So thank you very much.
Frank, well, we have a resolution that was passed several years ago, that there would be no, uh, weekend work, extended hours on the weekends in, uh, Community Board One. So I don't know if the board want to put that to a vote, or how we want to handle that. Okay, um, anybody got any ideas? About lifting the res, lifting the resolution?
Uh, Chairperson Fuller, this is Adam Myers. Um, I, I just want to, uh, I guess, comment that this development that's going on in the Broadway Triangle is, it, it's really an amazing thing. It's, it's the result of almost a decade of struggle of this community to sort of, uh, increase the amount of affordable housing that we can build out of this previously underutilized area. And the, the fact that, you know, these developers that are all cooperating on these projects, it's really a, it's really a cool thing. And so I guess I would note that if there were to be a project where I would support lifting these restrictions and allowing it to move forward as quickly as possible, this would certainly be on the, uh, at the top of that list.
Thank you, Adam. The, the, the board has to agree. Thank you, Adam, the board has to agree on sending a letter, and maybe we should bring it up in new business, because as we know, that generally with the public speakers, we don't have no discussions on that with, doing the speaking. So we can bring it up on the new business and discuss it and decide how we want to handle it, okay?
Did somebody say that the local people around there don't mind if you start at 7:00 in the morning?
Dan, let's discuss it on the new business.
Okay.
Okay, okay, next item is.
Chair Fuller?
Yes.
There's one more speaker.
Oh, there's one more speaker, okay.
Yes, Perry Lee? You're muted?
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name is Perry, I live on Jackson Street, off of Graham Avenue, calling on behalf of PS-132. We're seeking the board's support for an open streets permit that we filed. We have been waiting for our gym to be completed, that gym is not yet complete, we don't know when it will be complete, we were told that it would be completed at the beginning of the school year, the school construction agency has told us that that's going to be delayed, so we don't know until when, we had an open streets permit last year that was really successful, we were able to give the kids recess outside pretty much all year, so we're basically looking to do the same thing, close the street during school hours, so that, you know, we can have an outdoor place alleviate some of the space concerns inside the school, also, you know, use it for programming when needed.
You're asking for a letter of support to open the street?
Yes, the DOT has asked us to engage the Community Board and get, you know, either a written indication, if there's a letter of support, that would be perfect.
Okay, we'll take it up on the new business.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, committee reports. Land use, Dell.
Okay, thank you. Put on my other hat here, the one that's not taking the attendance, okay, so this, we met on August 9th, and it was with respect, we had a combined public hearing and committee meeting to hear the request of the Domino site to, for approval of a, a letter of approvals for a modification of their previously approved special permit over at Domino. At first, we, it appeared that we were, that city planning was considering putting off the, putting off the certification for perhaps two weeks, so that we wouldn't have to have a summer meeting, but then it turned out that they decided not to do that, so the question was, do we have this meeting and then try to call a special Community Board meeting prior to tonight, because the time, the clock would have been up a couple days before the full board meeting, so we had the public hearing, to see if there was any, you know, if there were any objections, no one appeared at the public hearing with objections, and so we just, we heard the presentation, essentially, Dave Lambino, David Lambino, and his team explained that the proposed modification is with respect to Site D and the public space at Domino, and it involves decreasing the width of that, of River Street from South Third to South Fifth Street, from 30 feet to 20 feet, for the purpose of creating additional recreation space. Now, this, we were concerned about whether this would cause some traffic problems, and that maybe people parking, nobody would be able to get around, but they explained that this is actually a no parking, no standing lane, and the FDNY is actually in favor of this change, since the lane is not meant to accommodate parking or standing vehicles. They explained also the modification would allow architectural improvements, such as the elimination of this bulky barnacle bump out on one of the towers, and it would also widen the visual corridor to the park from Kent Avenue. Since no one came to oppose, and no one asked to be heard, we adjourned, we had the committee meeting, and our concern, we had one concern, and that was whether the rooftop of the towers would remain residential and would not be used commercially, because as everyone knows, we have been trying very hard to decrease the commercial use of these rooftops, and David Lambino assured us that Two Trees would honor that request, and so we decided that since Two Trees agreed to honor the one request we had, and there were no objections, we decided that we would not ask our chair to call us, you know, a special full board meeting, and so this vote will be coming in a few days late on the clock, however, we felt that it was something that was okay this time around, and actually, city planning has, in the past, tried to reassure us that even if we're a few days late with a recommendation, they always take it into consideration and listen to it, so everyone present, we had, by the time we voted, we were one short of a quorum, so everyone voted to authorize me to recommend approval of the application with the request that the rooftop use of the towers would remain residential and would not be used commercially, so I would need a I would need a vote, roll for, hold on that.
Make a motion, Steve Chesler.
De Alice Cabrera.
De Agnabu.
Iris Cabrera.
Okay.
Okay, okay, here we go, so Gina Argento. Gina, do you vote? Okay, Bobden Bakarowski.
Yes.
Lisa Vamonte.
Yes.
Tina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Rosadis.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Philip Caponego.
Yes.
Frank Carbone.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chiracella.
Yes.
Teresa Tensiatto. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly. Giovanni Di Maro.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater. Arthur Dimonovsky.
Yes.
Lloyd Fang.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
De Alice Fuller, oh, I guess you don't vote, do you, De Alice, sorry. Crystal Garcia.
Yes.
Doll Goldstein. Doll Gross. David Heimlich.
Yes.
Sabrina Hill. Katie Danny Harwood.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias. Moisha Indig. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky. Cory Canton.
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn.
Yes.
William Clagswell.
Yes.
The GWBA.
Yolando. Maria Lianza.
Yes, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Yolo. Trina McKeva.
GWBA.
Adam Myers.
Yes.
Dante Michele.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz. Rabbi David Niedeman.
Yes.
Karen Yevgen. Mary O'Domrich. Mary O'Domrich?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay, Janice Peterson. Jan?
Yes, yes.
Okay, Bella Sable. Isaac Sofer.
Yes, yes.
Dell, yes? William Vega?
Yes.
Maria Vieira? Simon Weiser?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let me count these now.
Dell, it's Erin Drinkwater, yes.
Okay, okay, wait, let me get you there. Gotcha. Okay, so thirty-two, yes. No, no, no extension, no recusal, so it passes.
Thank you, Dell.
You're welcome, thank you.
You're welcome.
For somebody that's on the phone, mute themselves, please. SLA? Arthur, SLA?
Yes. Good evening, folks, SLA, we got, on the last meeting, we had fourteen new applications, which the committee recommended only one application for denial, that's application number one, if you can look at the list. So I'd like to, the committee to vote on it. That's Hernandez, on behalf of the entity, to be determined, DBA 157 White Avenue. The committee recommended denial. Do we have a vote on the denial of this application?
Yes, I would like to make the motion to approve the committee report.
Phil Caponego will second that.
Okay, Philip and Bogdan, roll call vote, please.
Question, question on the motion?
Yes.
Are we, is this just approvals and denials on new?
Actually, you know what, let's connect them both, because we have another denial on the postponement.
So it's renewals also, or just new?
No, just the new ones.
Okay.
So, but actually, I can add, we had another denial, which was one of the items previously postponed, that's number five, Class and Co Events, was also denial, so we can actually vote on both of them, there was only two denials we recommended at the meeting.
So are we voting on the whole recommendation, in other words, what you've recommended to approve and to deny?
Yeah, let's vote on denials first, actually, we're gonna vote on the new application and the previously postponed. So it's gonna be number four, which is, was the, I mean, it was, number one was recommended for denial from the new, and number five from the previously postponed was also recommended for denial.
Is there anything that the committee can say about the reasons for denial, I'm not sure why that recommendation was made?
To be honest, too, I don't, I don't remember, I wasn't running the meeting, but mostly the reasons are, either they didn't do the application right, or the parts of the application are missing, or they didn't contact all the neighbors to inform them about opening the new location, there's a bunch of things that happened, so we have all the notes, I wasn't the one who was running the meeting at the time.
I think we have the report, right, we have the full report that we can look at.
Yeah.
We have the report.
We have the report.
So there's denials because of no show, denials because the application was incomplete, and there were postponements as well.
That's right, but, yeah, the postponement, yeah, we didn't do the denial on them, we just postponed them, that's correct.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So the motion that Bogdan made was to approve the committee report in its entirety, that was seconded by Phil, do we want, would Bogdan like to amend his motion to just the denials at this point, and then go back to the rest of the report, or are we voting to approve the, all the recommendations of the committee?
The vote was on denials, he only had one, and then he said two, he had enough.
I understand, but Bogdan's motion was to approve the committee report, I just want to be clear.
Even easier, that's, we can do that, if the board is okay with that. Now, we're all together.
That's correct, Eric, I was first to on the motion to approve the committee recommendation as is written, that's correct, Eric, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Oh, thank you. So the vote is only on the two denials, right?
I don't think so, Madam Chair, because I think that the motion was to approve the committee recommendation as written.
Right, the whole report?
Yes.
That's correct.
Correct.
New, new.
If I may, that's correct, that's correct, so basically, the report is accepted as was written, as was submitted by the SLA committee, but Arthur just mentioned that from those applications, two items were denied, one from the new application on release, and one from previously postponed.
That's correct.
Right, okay, I second it, I second the motion.
Bogdan, Gina, does everybody agree with that? Roll call vote, please.
Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogden Bakarowski?
Yes.
Lisa Vamonte?
Yes.
Tina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Rosadis?
Yes.
Iris Cabrera?
No.
Philip Caponego? Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Steve Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chiracella?
Yes.
Teresa Tensiatto. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly. Giovanni Di Maro.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dimonovsky.
Yes.
Lloyd Fang.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Crystal Garcia.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. David Heimlich.
Yes.
Sabrina Hill. Katie Danny Harwood.
Yes.
Sonia Iglesias. Moisha Indig. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky. Cory Canton.
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn.
Yes.
William Clagswell.
Yes.
Yolando. Maria Lianza.
Yes.
Yolo. Tina McKeva. Adam Myers.
Yes.
Dante Michele.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi David Niederman?
Yes.
Karen Yeves? Mary O'Donohue?
Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay. Janice Peterson?
Yes, yes.
Bella Sable? Isaac Sofer? Del Teague, yes? William Vega?
Yes, yes.
Maria Vieira?
Yes.
And Simon Weiser?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll count that up now. Thirty-one, yes. One, no, no abstention, no recusal. Okay, passes. Thank you, Del. You're welcome. Does that conclude your report, Arthur?
Yes, thank you so much, and I'd like to remind the committee members that our next meeting is gonna be held next Monday at six-thirty PM, a swing in sixties.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I was checking the lead of the new request for a license, but I don't see a new request for the forty-two hotel in South Bay. They have a post, and the window says that they are going to request a new license. And this is a venue or hotel, we denied three years ago, and they're looking for another out, for a new application, but I don't see it in the, in the lease. And I wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm, I attended that meeting. So I don't know if there's way that I can make sure that they are going to be in that meeting, because I have a lot of questions for them. I live next to the building, next to the hotel, so I want to know why they wanted to do another application to within my, the first one, for a full license, which is across the street of the school, or the city school, by the way, Rabbi Niederman.
What was the name of the, the place?
It's for the forty-two hotel.
Okay, let me, let me check the emails, and I'll get back to you, Iris.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dibinowski.
Just Simon, can I say something?
Yes, Simon.
Are we back to meetings in person, then the governor?
No, Simon. No, Simon.
What, no, what?
No, we're not back to in-person meeting, it's been extended, extended.
So why, why, he said the meeting's gonna be at sixteen, the SLA committee said it's gonna be at, he mentioned the location where the meeting's gonna be. He just mentioned that the meeting's gonna be at, at sixties and Ainsden Street.
He mentioned the swing in sixty, Simon.
Right, but is that gonna be in person, or it's gonna be virtual?
I understand it's gonna be in person.
Well, we just heard from the chair that everything's still virtual.
He asked to have it there, he was granted permission to have it. Okay. Transportation?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, we met on June thirtieth. It was a six-hour meeting, which I will not take that long to report it out. Just let you know that, I'll just go through the agenda points. Cooper Park is gonna get some safety improvement project upgrades to add some features that'll slow the traffic, and also make visibility better. This is in advance of the, excuse me, the project going on at the Greenpoint Hospital complex. And so we're a little ahead of the curve on getting those improvements before we get that project underway. That did not require a vote, because the safety improvement projects are within the DOT toolbox. We heard about the Broadway Lorimer Street pedestrian safety, safety improvements. They'll be closing that slip, those of you familiar with that intersection by, by the hospital. They'll be closing the slip, they'll be reorganizing the, the turn patterns, and shortening the crosswalks at, at that location. It should do a lot to, to increase safety, which, and most of you know that intersection, it's very chaotic. And that's also going forward. And then the two items that dragged it into six hours were McGinnis Boulevard preliminary design. DOT came to us with three plans that they're looking at for the safety improvements along, along the McGinnis Avenue, sorry, McGinnis Boulevard corridor. There were a lot of comments on both sides, both for and against, and then some, some granular details as to what, what in the plans were liked. You can read the report for those comments. DOT will come back to us sometime in the winter. And some of you may have seen the email that went around back on the twenty-fifth of August, saying that they were going to go ahead with some of the safety improvements that they can do within the toolkit, like extending a couple bulbouts for pedestrians. There was a controversy about the left turns on and on, on, on to and off of McGinnis, particularly Nassau, Driggs, and Engard. Those are going forward. However, we're gonna see how those work, and then when DOT comes back to us, we're gonna have a more robust discussion about how that's working, particularly at Nassau. And, as I mentioned, there were a lot of public speakers on that item, a lot of good comments, and I encourage people to read the report for those comments. The second long item was the Berry Street Open Street Design Proposal. The open space and OSP units came to us to lay out what they planned to do to make Berry Street permanent open street. There was a lot in the plan that some of us were a little surprised by, including direction changes, et cetera. And there were also concerns about businesses on Berry Street that would not be able to operate with those direction changes. Subsequent to that transportation committee meeting, myself, Karen Yeves, and DOT, including Rhonda, Kyle Gorman, and Jessica Kronstein, and Ms. Villenhoff, who's like managing the program, came out to discuss with the Roasters about how that, that change would affect their business. And we have a, I got a commitment from Ms. Weisenhorf to, to consider the businesses before moving ahead with the plan. Subsequent to that, it was announced that DOT would not be making these implementations this fall, as they had planned, due to a number of concerns at DOT, but they will be coming back at the next construction season in, in the spring, to start, to start on that. And we'll be hearing from DOT before that, to see what amendments they've made to the, to the plan, based on the public comment, and to the concerns that were raised during the meeting. Unclear as to when that, that appearance by that, by open space and OSP will, will happen. But it'll be in the next couple months. Also, many comments on that item, which I'll also ask, ask you, those interested in Berry Street, to go back and take a look at, if you weren't at the meeting. And, you know, controversies with Berry Street are ongoing, and hopefully we can get some kind of resolution that everyone can live with, but it's kind of a thorny issue. Because of time, and the length of the meeting, there was no older new business. And I'll take this opportunity now, since PS-132 brought it up, and was not able to address it at the rescheduled September sixth transportation committee meeting. You heard from Mr. Lee about the, the need for the open street on Consigliere. Those of you familiar with, with the area around PS-132 know that the open street was operating last year, because their gym is still under construction, as he told you, it's been delayed. So I would, because it was an existing open, open street play street for, for the use of PS-132, I hope there won't be any controversy with going forward and sending a letter to DOT asking, supporting the interim use of Consigliere as, as a open play street as soon as possible, while DOT is still going through their thirty-day public vetting period. So I'll, I need a vote to support that. Or any, any discussion on that item.
Phil Caponegro will make a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Mary O'Donohue. Can I make a comment concerning the last transportation committee meeting?
There is a, there is a, there is a motion on the floor. I'm happy to entertain that afterwards, Mary, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So there's a, a motion to, to approve Consigliere, is there a second?
I could second that.
So let me just be clear, this is a, a motion to write a letter supporting the PS-132 having interim open street allowance.
Yes.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, can I start roll call vote?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna get started on that. Gina Argento?
Yes.
Bogdan Bakarovsky?
Yes.
Lisa Bomonte?
Yes.
Gina Barrows?
Yes.
Eric Rosades? Iris Cabrera?
Yes.
Philip Caponegro?
Yes.
Frank Carbone?
Yes.
Steve Chesler?
Yes.
Michael Chertella?
Yes.
Teresa Cianciata? Stephanie Cuevas? Ronan Daly? Giovanni Di Mato?
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater?
Yes.
Arthur Dibinowski?
Yes.
Lloyd Fang?
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, sorry, Crystal Garcia?
Yes.
Joel Goldstein? Joel Gross? David Heinrich?
Yes.
Sabrina Hilt? Katie Danny Horowitz?
Yes.
Sonia Glacia? Not here, Moishe Indig? Robert Jeffrey?
Yes.
Bosina Kaminsky? Cory Canton?
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn?
Yes.
William Clagswell?
Yes, yes.
Yolandau? Maria Lianza?
Yes.
Maria Lianza, sorry. Yolo? Trina McKeeva? Adam Myers?
Yes.
Dante Michele?
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz? Rabbi David Niederman? Rabbi? Karen Yeves? Mary O'Donohue?
Yes.
Janice Peterson?
Yes.
Bella Sable? Isaac Sofer?
Yes.
Del Teague, yes? William Vega?
Yes, yes.
Maria Vieira?
Yes.
Simon Weiser? Simon?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good.
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks, I got it, thanks, let me just count.
Thank you.
And Toby Moskowitz votes yes as well.
Okay. Okay, thirty-three, yes. Zero no, zero abstention, zero recusal, and this passes. Thank you, Del. Mary, you want to ask Eric a question?
I actually just want to make a comment and raise an issue. I'm a member of the Transportation Committee, and I was a part of that discussion on open streets at the last meeting. And I clearly stated that I was going to make some comments that were, that were not representing the Congress one, but my own viewpoints. And I expressed some concerns and some displeasures about Berry as an open street. The following day, Kevin LaShara, who is not an appointed member of the board, called my DC office, complaining about my views, and trying to intimidate my chief of sta, trying to intimidate my chief of staff to have any kind of repercussions against me for speaking out my personal views, which I'm allowed to do. This is the second time that he has done that. And I'm also hearing that that kind of situation is happening with other people who are expressing views that are contrary to Kevin and some of his close friends. So I think that this is a very important issue. I think that something has to be done about this intimidation tactic. He has no right to call my job, especially when I publicly stated that I was speaking for myself.
Mary, if I can, I just want to support you in that. I feel like we all serve. Some of us serve because we have certain affiliations with elected officials, or, or whatever, or agencies. But when we speak on an issue that affects us directly, it's our right to do so as board members, and none of us should face intimidation by any member of the board, the city, or the public.
Well, I, I think that there should be some kind of resolution, or some, something put into the bylaws about this. Because I think that if, if it isn't dealt with now, it's going to continue, with, if not me, somebody else. And that's inappropriate behavior.
I, Mary, again, I completely support you. I don't know what any legal remedy would be, or like vote, or whatever, I don't know how that's possible. I mean, we see members of Congress being, you know, harassed by, by people across the country right now. So maybe we should ask for direction from, from our friend at the Borough President's Office for that. But, you know, I just do want to say that nobody deserves harassment for expressing. their opinions. And, but I don't, I really don't know what remedy can be taken, but that's it.
Okay, Adam, you're the new chair of the bylaws. Do you think this is an issue that should be part of the bylaws?
I wasn't totally sure what the initial complaint was. Who, who was the individual that was making the, making those calls? And were they members on this board?
No.
I'm happy to, to think about this issue and, and see whether, you know, it needs to be brought back to the Bylaws Committee, but off the top of my head, it's not obvious to me what purpose would be served by including something in the bylaw, bylaws purporting to restrain some, you know, all members of the public from doing such and such. I'm, I'm happy to continue thinking about the issue, though.
Yeah, but I think we can all stand in solidarity with Mary and just have people from the board that are willing to sign a letter that just say, please, this is not, in these times when everybody's being threatened and pushed around and abused, you know, because Kevin does a lot of good work in the neighborhood, so this is not good behavior. Just ask him, he has a big organization, it's a lot of volunteers, we know him, people on the board know him, so let's just make it known that if Mary gets bothered, others of us are gonna raise our voice. I don't think we need to change bylaws, I think we need to just say something.
Okay, Mary, put the, put the issue in writing and send it to me, and I'll send it to the Bylaws Committee, and they can take it up and discuss and see what they want to come up with.
Okay, it's the second time it happened. I did send you an email, but I'll resend it.
Okay, well, now send it to the Bylaws Committee, and, and like Adam said, he would think about it. Maybe he might want to address it with the Bylaws Committee.
Thank you, I, I wanted to raise that issue, thank you so much.
Fuller, may I say something?
Are you finished, Mary?
Yes, I'm done, thank you.
Can I record my vote, please, Madam Chair?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Actually, I, I'm glad this was brought up, because I, I reached out to a couple executive committee members a few weeks, or a few months ago. I think that, as Eric had said, it is a pretty contentious issue, and I think that Mary is, Mary O'Donovan is not alone in feeling targeted by, by some harassment. I've spoken to several board members who get targeted both in person and online after appearing on this community board and giving personal opinions. So I, I'd like to recommend that, I don't really know about bylaws or whatnot, but perhaps this is something we can discuss at the Executive Committee meeting, but, because I, I know that this is an ongoing issue, that I think that the board needs to stand against harassment, against, you know, on all sides.
Yeah, Alice, it's Phil, I have my hand up. I, again, I'm just gonna echo what Katie said. Why don't we put it on our agenda for our next Executive Committee meeting, and we'll discuss it, and we'll see what we can do about it.
You're here.
Well, personally, I think it should go to the Bylaws Committee, because whatever we says, gonna have to be part of the bylaws.
Well, still discuss.
Not a bylaw.
Yeah, can I? Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I please record my vote? Yes. On the previous item, the roll call, I got disconnected in the middle of the roll call.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is Toby Moskowitz, I also want to make sure that you heard my, my vote as well.
We got your vote, we got your vote, Toby.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, you know, Phil, bring it up at the executive board, we can discuss it. I'd also like for Mary to put it in writing, and we can forward to the Bylaws Committee, and we can see what we can come up with, because nobody wants to be harassed by trying to do good in their community. Does that conclude your report, Eric?
Yes, just to, just to say that the rescheduled Transportation Committee meeting with the same agenda, which you should have all received, will be on Thursday, October 6th. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next is Parks Minute as written. Announcements, electors, I guess all the electors spoke. Joanna, is there any other electors that we have here that would like to speak? Joanna?
No, I don't see anyone else on the list here.
Okay, thank you. Old business? Okay, new business?
Yes, Phil Caponegro, I have my hand up. I'm, I'm gonna make a motion or, or appoint a discussion to talk about the letter of support to the Department of Buildings for early scheduled building in the Broadway Triangle, just to see what people think about it.
Okay, so, for discussion, we got two items for discuss. Any discussion on the hours for Broadway Triangle?
Madam Chair, this is Eric Rosades. Oh, I'm sorry, Del.
No, no, go on later, Eric, it's fine, it's fine.
Okay, I, you know, those of you that have been around for a minute will know all the controversy and, and agony that surrounds the Broadway Triangle, and just the fact of the organ, is, we have Riceboro, Saint Nick's Alliance, UJO, all together, under one happy umbrella to like make this project go forward after so much legal tension, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I just think we really need to support these hours. I, I understand that there, you know, there are some concerns, but, you know, it's gonna provide 140 units of low-income housing to an area that sorely needs it. And, you know, the, the groundbreaking is tomorrow, let's get this thing done already and built. And, and that's all I have to say. Del?
So I, I was going to take slightly different tact, although I'm very appreciative of what they're going to do and what they've accomplished, but if I remember correctly, we, we spoke at length about giving a letter, allow, you know, approving and, and supporting extended hours on the weekends, because many people in the community came to us and said it was a hardship and begged us not to support it. And so I, I think we, I really think we have to take that into consideration. If we're going to allow it for this project, then I don't know that we can not allow it for others, because we have a lot of really, really good projects that, and developments that, that come along. I, I just think that, you know, I don't want to lose sight of the, the people who live here, the, the individuals, the, you know, the, the, the working people who have come to us and begged us not to do this, not to support this. So I, I just want to raise that. And, you know, we do have a, we have, we did decide as a community board not to issue these kinds of letters of support. It doesn't mean the, the developer won't get the permission, but that was something that we came to a decision on, and it happened with taking into consideration the developers and also the feedback we got from community members.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair, this is Julia. Thank you, Del, those was the words that I was looking for. We cannot lose sight of our community. Eric and whoever asked him for this letter, I was one of those people out there marching with the community to get the triangle built. And it's low income, yes, we need these things, but we gotta remember, we're serving the community, and there's people that live there that would have to deal with the noise Monday through Sunday? When do they get a break? When do they get rest? When they don't have to hear jackhammers and, and these big trucks and things coming through and digging up dirt? We need, they need a break, too, their ears need rest. They need to be able to sleep at night, get ready to go to work the next morning, get your children ready for school, and et cetera. So I know we haven't voted yet, but I'm not in favor of writing a letter for approval for an extension for the weekend, for the hours. We's here to serve the community, not the industry. Saint Nick's and everyone, I love you, but Julia's not in support of this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I admire your race, if I can be recognized. You know, I, I wanna definitely support what Del was saying, what Julia was saying. You know, we can't lose sight of supporting the community, and one of the fundamental concept here of quality of life, because we've been supporting everything. We've been supporting the music, the concert, whatever's come, the restaurant, the bar, every of these things, that development, which still, we are surrounded, we are one of the most developed area in the countries, and, and we are impacted. And personally, I had to deal four years, would, wouldn't even ask a permit, but was doing illegal work, and I've been lost in the calling 311, even if it was a small work, and also my neighbor had to do that. And, and of course, nobody was there on a Saturday and Sunday, and the report we're going next week. And, you know, that legally, with a permit or without a permit, people has diverse issue, and the sanctity of, of, you know, our homes, they cannot be forgotten about. Somebody may go away on Saturday and Sunday every weekend, it may not be impacted, but somebody may work on a Friday night, all night, is a nurse, is a doctor, is a waiter, whatever it is, and it's, he has one day, you know, that he can rest. And 7:00 AM is even a big, big ask, you know, it's, it's not a couple hours exceptionally, because sometimes, some permit happen exceptionally, there is an emergency, but I believe we shouldn't do that, so I would not support that. I believe we have so much development, so much construction, and every event, every approval, it's a precedent, and the community board voted and battled, and people demonstrated in a time now, well, they may not have the ability to come here and demonstrate, because COVID has changed a lot of things lately. You know, they're gonna be impacted, and personally, I focus a lot on the community issue and the quality of life, it needs to be safeguarded. So I'm together with all of you against that.
Thank you, Michele. Steve Ches?
Thanks, Madam Chair, I just wanted, we'll have another new business item after this one, this one, maybe.
Adam Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For those that don't know me, I've spent the last 10 years or so working as a housing attorney for folks in Williamsburg, Greenpoint, and Bushwick, and so I'm extremely familiar with the sorts of burdens that folks live under when they're surrounded by development, and they can't get a break from all that stuff. And so those, those concerns are very real, and I appreciate the board members that have spoken up on those. But I do think that there's a line that can be drawn between for-profit developers seeking to make a lot of money on the backs of these sort of externalities cast out upon their neighbors, and projects like this one, which are gonna build 100% affordable housing that's crucially, crucially, crucially necessary in neighborhoods like this. And I'd also note that nonprofit developers like these are often under constraints that the big for-profit developers are not, you know, shoestring budgets, everything has to work right for the project to succeed. And we've seen a lot of these projects tragically get mired in delays and put off for years, and, you know, the, the issues go on. And so when a project like this comes around, I just think it's really important that we as a community come together and pull out all the stops so that we can, we can get this thing built, and we can make this thing happen, and, and start seeing some of this relief from rents that we and our neighbors, you know, really need. And so I, I would support writing the letter that these community members have asked for.
Can I ask a question?
Eric, you have your hand up to speak on this issue again?
I'd just be interested to hear from Rabbi Niederman if he has any.
A lot of people got their hands up, your hand is not.
Okay, no, no, that's fine, I've just, just, you know.
Okay.
Yes, I, I mean, you know, we're a party to this, I don't know.
Rabbi Niederman, Del had her hand up, please.
I, I just, I just think that, um, I understand you're wanting to have, you know, a, a different standard for the nonprofits, but I really think that the noise is going to be the same, no matter whether it's a for-profit or a nonprofit, and the people who live right around these, these developments, I think that they, they deserve a break, and, and there, there's been no effort here so far by Saint Nick's to go to the people surrounding the development and to get them involved in, in this request. And I, I will say, if we're going to allow it now, then I, you know, I think that there are gonna be other developers coming along who are also going to provide a lot of, or substantial affordable housing, but I, you know, as I said, the, the noise is going to be the same, and if you live in, in, near one of these developments, and you're not fortunate enough to be able to get away on the weekends, weekends are precious for, for working people, and I would not support it.
Rabbi Niederman?
Yes, I just want to say, I can only echo what was said before. This project is so important, so precious, it's not a for-profit, it's totally, it's total.
We are a conflict of interest, this is a conflict of interest.
I want to say, I said that, I can't vote.
I'm saying to the chair, this is not fair. Rabbi Niederman's part of the project, this is a conflict of interest.
It's not a vote, Jan, he has the.
Taking this asset.
I said to begin with, I said to begin with, that, that I cannot vote on that, on that, but an explanation.
Can't persuade us either.
I'm a.
I love you to death, but really.
He has a right to.
Rabbi speak.
Just, just as a point of order.
Everybody calm down. Rabbi Niederman, continue, please.
Thing is, we, we are talking about making sure that, that the winter does not stop the project, which means that so many needy families might be the later chance, the lottery for to, to get a, a home on top of their head. I think it's, I think it's totally different, totally different than other type of, of project, and therefore, I, as, as one of the partners, yes, I admit that, request the board should give a letter.
I disagree.
May I, Madam Chair?
Who, who, who?
This is Maria Vieira.
Oh, 'cause I'm looking through the participants, I don't see no hand, I'm going by hands up. Okay, go ahead, Maria.
I'm sorry, we, for some reason, I can't raise the hand thingy, I don't know why. Um, so as a member of the partners, of the unified partners, I will also say that I cannot vote, and I will not vote, but I want to, I want to clarify that there is a difference between a private developer and, and a nonprofit developer because of the financing structure. When the timeline is exhausted, so does the financing, which means that if you don't use it within due time, you may lose it. I just want to say that.
Thank you, Maria. Paul Keltnerborn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just, I just wanted to clarify, because a few people have mentioned Sunday work or seven-day work, that what they're requesting is additional hours on weekdays and, and also on Saturday, but not on Sunday. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? I don't see any more hands up.
Yes, Madam Chair, Steve Chesler. Yeah, just also, I think, just a distinction here is that, you know, they, they, this request came to the board, and with private developers, if they requesting, you know, you know, weekends or overnight pours, they don't come to the community board, they just go straight to DOB, and they do it, you know? So I think, I mean, I think they're trying to do, do the right thing, and this, this isn't a giant tower project or a teardown, it's, you know, as people, it's, you know, it's historical, and it's, I think it's important that it, you know, it, it, it manifests, you know, the way it's supposed to.
But, everybody else. Steve, there's a housing committee, you see, with the community board. Rabbi Niederman heads it up. If we were doing things properly, all of this would have gone to the committee. People would have talked it out, then it would come to the board. And we've been missing all these housing groups. And I would just say that I care about all of them. I've worked with all these groups for years and years. But they're not there a part of the planning and bringing forth their ideas to the community board. So I'm saying we would be in a different situation tonight if they would come back to the table. If Rabbi Niederman had called a meeting of everybody, then we wouldn't be sitting here at this hour. So I just want to bring up the, and I don't know yet from all the people talking. I hear you that there's a time limit. I agree. But what is the time limit? How much, how much is having these days? How many days are we talking about? How many hours? And what does it really mean? I didn't get a clarity. I just kind of hear we got to move before we lose the money. And Frank didn't say that, by the way. So I don't know what the issue really still is, other than they want to move before the winter. And what are they promising? If they get it, what will be the promise to the community? If we agree, what will we get?
Chair, may I speak?
Identify yourself.
Erin Drinkwater. First, before making his comment, I want to say I no longer work for the Department of Social Services. But I do think it is in our best interest, Jan, I mean, to what the community gets, we get 100% affordable housing for people to move into, to move out of shelter. And I think that we as a city need to take every opportunity we can to increase the speed of development safely. And I think if we can make this concession, it's really important. Yes, there will be impacts to the most, you know, immediate of neighbors. But I think that the outcome here is worth that sacrifice.
Madam Chair, Phil Capone, why don't we just put it to a board vote and see how it comes?
Well, we will put it to a vote, we will put it to a vote when we finish the discussion.
Okay.
I want to be able, I want people to be able to discuss it. Does anybody else have a question or any comment?
Madam Chair, this is Julia. I don't have a question, but I still have my same comment is the fact that it impacts the neighborhood with the noise.
We heard you, Julie.
Whether they are.
Heard what you said, Julie.
Whether they are private or nonprofit, it doesn't lessen any of the noise that's going to be made in the neighborhood. And I understand that it's going to be low income. Low income to me means nothing unless it's like darn near free. But we still have to keep serving our community. I know St. Nick's serves the community, but we as a board came on here to defend our community against noise. And as someone said, the life of living. We need to really stand together with this. And it was a decision already made that we weren't going to extend it to go longer hours. The money is there and the money's put in certain areas to be spent at a certain time. And I'm quite sure that money was put to be spent and finished before winter comes in and then they get another budget and so forth and so forth. But my hands are being thrown up. I can't, I can't do that.
Okay, is there any other comments or questions?
Can we ask petitions? Certain.
I didn't hear you. Who's this sofa?
Yes, Isaac Soffer, sorry.
Your question was?
Certain threshold of petitions.
I didn't hear your question.
If we may ask them to bring certain threshold of petitions.
You mean from, like signatures from neighbors supporting the proposal?
Yes.
I think that would be fair. I think it's unfair that the neighbors have not been given a chance to come to us. And by the way, it isn't true, in my experience, it isn't just the nonprofits that come and ask for an extension of time to work. Look, I think, I think this product, this development is wonderful and, you know, but we've had certain processes in the past that give individuals a voice. And I think it's personally, I'm not comfortable with us deciding as the city. We know what's best for everyone. To me, it's always been, we've always really made very certain that the average individual person gets a voice here rather than have the city or various, various large organizations decide for them. I just don't think it's right. I, that doesn't mean that the project is not worthwhile. But it worries me when we start to lose sight of the little person.
I believe, Madam Chair, if I can reinforce what Dell is saying, definitely what I understand. You know, he needs more outreach, probably a dedicated outreach, building by building, neighbor by neighbor. You know, as I said before, some people may not even be there on a Saturday and may not be impacted. What is the majority of the people think? And, and, you know, and I feel very uncomfortable that something like this is shovel like this. We don't have even a full attendance here at community board. I know there will be other members that know here and they will not be in favor of this. And we have to vote and something like this will pass by. I definitely, I love not to vote on this tonight. It's too premature. I believe there is more conversation that need to be happened. And as somebody has working also in the field in the past, many years ago, you make your calculation and a contractor works for profit despite the fact this is a project not for profit. You make calculation, you take in consideration, maybe winter, you take in consideration that those are the rule of this community board, that you cannot work on a Saturday. And again, and somebody, despite the fact that there's going to go, you know, as 100% affordable house, somebody is going to gain some benefit of this for goods. So I support this project. I don't criticize the project, but I criticize that citizens have to pay an impact in terms of quality of life. I don't think it's fair. And I don't think it's fair to pass it like this without going through a more dedicated and more extensive process. But thank you.
So am I hearing that we should ask them to come back with, whether they've done some community outreach?
Yes. That's my recommendation.
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
Absolutely more community outreach.
Well, Chair, I'd be inclined to move that we vote to draft a letter as requested by the, by the organizations.
Second.
Can I ask just a question of the people that are involved in the project? You know, ultimately, I think what they're asking for is, I guess, about 13 hours more per week. So if I understand it, the project is just breaking ground now. So like, what, you know, it doesn't seem to me that it would necessarily be finished by the winter. But I think understanding, and I agree, actually, I feel like setting a precedent, which is what we are being asked to do is premature. But within that, I would personally need to know more about the timeline of the project. And ultimately, with this sacrifice that we're being asked to make for our neighbors, what ultimately, how much faster is the project going to be done as a result of that? And is it in the idea of a financing issue potentially? Like, is that something that is an actual issue? Or is it really that it'll be finished in, you know, June or August of next year?
I agree.
Okay, well, there's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor. We can vote it up or down. Was there a second on the motion, Adam?
There was a second. I don't know who that was.
Eric.
Eric. Okay, the motion is on the floor to write a letter. And Eric and Myers. So we can vote it up or down. Roll call vote.
Wait, what is the letter?
There's a motion to write a letter right as of now without asking for any more from them to write a letter to support their request. Okay, Gina Argento.
Yes.
Bobden Bakarovsky.
Yes.
Lisa Gomonte.
No.
Gina Barrows.
No.
Eric Rosades.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
abstain.
Philip Capone.
Yes.
Frank Corbong.
Yes.
Steve Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chertella. Teresa Cianciata. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly. Giovanni Di Mato. Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dimanowski.
Yes.
Lloyd Feng.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
No.
Crystal Garcia.
No.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. David Heimlich.
Yes.
Sabrina Hill. Katie Denny Harwood.
Yes.
Okay, Sonia Glazier. Osha Indig. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Bozina Kaminsky. Cory Campton.
No.
Paul Celtic Warren.
Yes.
William Flaggsold.
No.
Yo Lando. Marie Lanza.
Abstain.
Yo Lo. Vina McKeva. Adam Myers.
Yes.
Santi Machelli.
No.
Toby Moskowitz.
No.
Rabbi David Niederman.
Did you get Toby's vote? What did you say, Toby?
No. He said no. Rabbi David Niederman, I think you're recusing yourself. Oh, he didn't vote, okay.
He can't vote on it.
Okay, Karen Yezes. Mary Adomirik.
No.
Dennis Peterson.
No.
Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer.
No.
Del Teague, no. William Vega.
No.
Maria Viera.
Recusal.
Simon Wiser.
What's the difference between?
Okay. Asking the difference between a recusal and abstain. A recusal is when you cannot vote because you have a conflict of interest.
Well, that's what I should have done then because I work with St. Nick's.
Okay.
You should have accused yourself.
Yes.
Do we still have a quorum? That's the question.
Oh, I don't know.
Hey, Dell, this is Giovanni Di Mato. I vote no.
Okay, thank you. I have to see if we have a quorum. I don't know.
Interesting vote. This is.
So. So I guess I'll count the votes here. So we have 30 people. So I guess we have a quorum, yeah?
Dell, excuse me, Dallas Phil. I got to refuse myself also. Please change my vote. I want to be accurate. Recusal on my vote?
I was watching.
Thank you, Dell.
Okay. All right, let me count the votes now.
Can I ask that question? Can you hear me?
Okay, 13 yes. The no. 14 no. One, one recusal, one, two, three recusal. Abstain. One. One abstain. So 13 yes, 14 no. One abstain, three recusal.
Dell, did you say there were 30 votes? Because that's 31. Oh, I guess if you're counting, oh, no, because Dialis doesn't vote.
And the abstention will go to the majority of the 14 votes in this case. So the 15 vote against.
Okay, so 15 against, 13 yes, so it failed. Next. Motion fails.
Okay, motion fail.
Perry Lee, you wanted a letter of support for PS 132?
We did that already.
We did that. We did that.
For the school, when, with Irish report?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had, I had another item, Madam Chair, Steve Chesler.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, back, you know, back in 2020, February 2020, National Grid came to the Environmental Protection Committee and then to the board, I mean, to the board, talking about their, what's called, you know, the North, no, no North, the North Brooklyn Pipeline from Brownsville, that was going to extend through our district through our final phase. And they also want to upgrade their liquefied natural gas terminal in Greenpoint. And the board voted unanimously in writing a resolution to the governor, basically, basically rejecting a rate hike to fund those projects and stating against it. Councilmember Wrestler and Councilmember Gutierrez are introducing legislation in the City Council tomorrow. Essentially, a resolution calling for, you know, the DUC not to issue permits for the upgrade and for investing any money in the, you know, extending the pipeline. And so I was asked if, for a press release from the two councilmembers, that they could pull from our letter from February of 2020 to include in their, you know, the press release related to supporting their legislation. And so I just wanted to, you know, obviously, I found out about this today. So obviously, no time to go through committee. But in light of the fact that the board voted unanimously to approve that initial rejection, that I feel justified just tonight to vote to essentially pull excerpts of that letter to be used in support of this legislation.
So you're making a motion on that for us to let them include our resolution?
Yes.
Phil Capone, I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call vote.
Gina Argento. Bobden Bakarovsky.
Yes.
Lisa Gomonte.
Recluse.
Gina Barrows.
Yes.
Eric Rosades.
Yes.
Iris Cabrera.
Yes.
Philip Capone.
Yes.
Frank Corbong.
Yes.
Stephen Chesler.
Yes.
Michael Chertella. Teresa Cianciata. Stephanie Cuevas. Ronan Daly. Giovanni Di Mato.
Yes.
Erin Drinkwater.
Yes.
Arthur Dimanowski.
Yes.
Lloyd Feng.
Yes.
Julia Amanda Foster.
Yes.
Crystal Garcia.
Yes.
Joel Goldstein. Joel Gross. David Heimlich.
Yes.
Sabrina Hill. Katie Danny Harwood.
Yep.
Sonia Glazier. Osha Indig. Robert Jeffrey.
Yes.
Ozina Kaminsky. Cory Canton.
Yes.
Paul Kelteborn.
Yes.
William Clagwell.
Yes.
Yolando. Marie Lanza.
Yes.
Yo Lo. Tina McKeva. Adam Myers.
Yes.
Dante Michele.
Yes.
Toby Moskowitz.
Yes.
Rabbi, Rabbi Niederman. Karen Yezes. Barry Odomrick.
Yes.
Dennis Peterson.
Yes.
Bella Sable. Isaac Soffer.
Yes.
Del Teague, yes. William Vega.
Yes.
Julia Viera.
Yes.
Simon Wiser. Simon? Okay, let me count. 29, yes. Um, one recusal. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There any, any more new business? Okay, well, now there being no more business, I'd like to thank everybody for attending and thank you for a productive meeting. And thank you, Dell, for taking on this responsibility tonight. And I thank everybody who's, uh, pitching in to, uh, make sure we have a smooth transition here. And I would like to, uh, say that we need to discuss like, maybe later on, uh, we need to set up a date for the, uh, to meet with, uh, O, O M E. So maybe, uh, the executive boy can send me a date that they're available. And we have to check the calendar and see what date is available. Matter of fact, give me two dates, that with your availability. Okay, and we'll work on that as soon as possible. Is there anything else?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
All to be safe.
You too, thanks. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.